Okay, I'd like to call to an order Clayton City Council meeting for August 20th, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So our first item is the consent calendar. And I do have one speaker card for item 3D. Is there any?
Yes, I intend to pull that item 3D from the calendar.
So let's pull item 3D. Are there any other requests by any other council members? Seeing none, I'd be looking for a motion on the other items.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I do not have any public comment on the other items. Seeing no one come forward, let's take a vote on those items. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And let's take up item 3D, which is the adoption of a resolution approving the award of a low bid contract to Carrick's Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $237,420 for the downtown raised planter box replacement project, including irrigation and power. Before I take a speaker card, our city manager, would you like to provide any feedback?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. We did hear some concerns raised about this particular item, so staff took the liberty to put together a small presentation. And we're going to have the city engineer, Scott Allman, present on this item, and we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So the downtown planter project, replacement project, was initiated just due to the broken and deteriorated planter boxes and the general disrepair of those pieces of our landscaping. The existing trees that were planted in those boxes some 20 years ago were planted in the box to attempt to keep their tree roots from the utility lines, which are fairly shallow beneath the sidewalk. That has had limited success. And there are two types of trees that are there, and one of the types of trees has been much more invasive than the others. So as it is now, the trees, not all of the trees, but the larger Chinese pistachio trees have outgrown the boxes, and they are root bound. They're actually bursting the boxes in most cases. And some of them have grown under the box and then are destroying adjacent sidewalk. Planter boxes are on both sides of Main Street, basically between the Grove and the Baty Ball Courts. They're numbered 1 through 12 in a clockwise direction, beginning at the tree that's in front of the Grove Park, going clockwise down Main Street, and then back up Main Street, ending at the street tree or the box that is in front of Morrissey's. There are six, six of each type of tree. There are six planter boxes that have existing crepe myrtle trees in them, and those are to remain. There are six boxes that have existing Chinese pistachio trees in them that are in various degrees of outgrowing the box that they're in and generally damaging the box and being root bound and not being in excellent health, especially for the long term, where they are not going to be able to do well because of being root bound. So the other one, another question that I know had come up is the planter box facades will remain the same. They'll be the faux rock, river rock that they currently are. So when those are rebuilt, they'll look the same as what they do now. So here are the 12 planter boxes. This is box one, has a Chinese pistachio in it. Unfortunately, there was a lot of, it was a bright day, lots of shades, so seeing the damage to that box is, it's hard to see how badly damaged the box is. Excuse me. Box two is a crepe myrtle, virtually minimal damage with repair to be made to the capstone and some grouting to the walls. Three, another Chinese pistachio. It has outgrown the box. It has gone underneath the box and damaged the adjacent sidewalk, the adjacent curb. It is just, it's literally exploding that box and the area. Crepe myrtle is number four, and it's fully, as far as I know, is fully mature, but does fit in the box. Minimal damage, minimal repair work to be done. Five, another pistachio, same response, same scenario. Planter box six is crepe myrtle. It's, I didn't get a picture of the box, unfortunately. I passed it by, but it is in decent shape and will have minimal work to be done on it. Seven, another crepe myrtle, same scenario. The box is in pretty decent shape. Eight, a pistachio. This one is not quite as bad as far as damage, but definitely the tree is stretching the limits of the ability of that box to hold, to hold the tree and the roots. Crepe myrtle at nine, it will remain, and minimal damage. On 10, Chinese pistachio. This is in front, basically in front of the museum. Crepe myrtle, the next one, also in front of the museum, and minimal, minimal damage, if any. And 12 is finally the last pistachio tree, and it is outgrowing the box and will very shortly cause severe damage to that box. So we've looked at what options that there are. One option, option number one, proceed with the project as planned and replace the six trees that are in question. Two, modify the project to only repair the boxes that contain the Chinese pistachio and then replace the other boxes as they are originally planned to do. And this would allow us to basically kind of limp along with the crepe myrtles there, knowing that the damage is going to continue, and it's going to cause more issue as far as time and effort and money to repair. Option three was a, is another modification to look at an arborist's evaluation of those three, of those six trees, to see if we were able to root prune them and make them fit better into the boxes. Would that be viable? Would they still be viable trees? What would that do to them? And then the fourth option would be a no project option, which I think is not desirable by the downtown merchants. They would, I'd like to have this, these things replaced and repaired. So option one benefits, the replacement trees are an appropriate species, and they'll ultimately fit into this application like the other six do. Planter boxes and surrounding concrete can be repaired and as planned, so that there's a uniform look throughout the entire project. And the project is currently budgeted, so that the funds are available and we can proceed with this. Detriment, you lose six mature trees, and then you replace them with 24-inch box trees, which are smaller. So there will be a gap, so to speak, in the maturity. You'll have six smaller trees that will be having to catch up. And the canopy is reduced because of that. So the shade from these mature trees will be reduced, excuse me, until the replacement trees mature and then fill in. Two, the option two, this is to modify then do only the boxes that have the crepe myrtles and just do repair work on the Chinese pistachio. Initially, the benefits are a lower project cost, because we're not doing all the work, and no, there's no loss of the existing six trees. They would remain. Detriment would be, project will be patched together, and it won't look uniform, so the downtown won't look complete, or it won't, it won't look finished. And the trees will really not be healthy for the long term. They'll be worse and worse root bound, and that will, you know, cause them to have health issues in the long term, which can lead to safety issues if they were to fail. Then you have the opposite, the possibility of having them come down at some point in time. And there's a lot more cost involved as far as long-term maintenance and repair, because those boxes are going to be continued to be damaged by the tree roots and will have to be repaired and patched back together. Number three, option three is basically the same. We may be able to save the Chinese pistachio trees, depending on the results of the evaluation by the arborist. And there is potential project cost savings, because we're doing, we'd be potentially doing fewer replacement trees. The detriment, project delay while the trees are evaluated. If they remain, they may not be healthy for the long term, as discussed before, and again, greater long-term maintenance and repair costs. And the no project option benefits, well, there's cost savings, because we would not be spending the project money, project budget, and no loss of existing trees. Detriments would be no improvements made, so the boxes would look as they do now, and no investment in the downtown street frontage from that to improve that.
So if I could take it from here, Scott. So we're faced with really one challenge on this project, and that is the potential loss of some really beautiful Chinese pistachio trees. And for any of you who have seen those trees in the fall, those colors change, and they are just a gorgeous tree, the kind of tree that you want in your community. The challenge is that they were placed in these boxes years ago, and they were not the right tree for those planter boxes. We're talking about a total of 12 boxes being repaired and really just six trees that would be removed. Should also be noted that on that street, on Main Street, there's about a total of approximately 30 trees that line the right way of the street. Only six of those are what we're talking about. These are the ones that are in boxes, not all of the other ones. Again, if we were to take either of the options that Scott mentioned a moment ago, that leave those trees in those boxes, whether we put in new boxes around them or we patch the old boxes, either one of those options, they're going to burst out of them again and potentially lift the pavement, creating trip hazards, which are liabilities for the city. So I can give you two recommendations. One is, as a lover of those Chinese pistachio, I would hate to see those go, and I would want you to save those trees under any circumstances. But the city manager recommendation is going to be, we can't take on that liability, and we don't want to take on the maintenance that would be ongoing year after year as those trees continue to burst those planter boxes open. We have a very small maintenance crew that is, has their hands full with our parks and our other improvements that we have to keep in good shape. Having to maintain those to prevent trip hazards would inevitably end up with a problem where sooner or later someone's going to trip, the boxes are going to start falling apart. So with that said, staff's initial recommendation to approve the project and move forward stands, and that is to award the project and allow us to move forward with it as soon as possible. It's been, I think, on the books for a couple of years now, so we've spent a lot of staff time at this point, and we're happy to take questions, and there may be comments as well.
Great. So let's bring it back to the council for any questions. I do have two quick questions. The bid that we currently have, does that include the six replacement trees, or would those come afterwards?
No, that includes the six replacement trees and their 24-inch box trees, the replacements are.
Okay.
And those trees are crepe myrtle, just to be clear.
Okay. And then timeline, do you know, if we were to award this tonight, do you know what the timeline is for the actual work?
The intent would be to have it done before the end of the calendar year. We were waiting until after the concerts and such for the summer, and working this as a fall project.
Okay. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Pierce?
Well, I have two. One is just to refine that answer just a little bit. We have Oktoberfest coming up, the beginning of October. Would we be in the middle of the project during the, probably the biggest street fair we have during the year?
There would be some construction that would be, have gone on where our plan is to have the contractor work around Oktoberfest or any of the, you know, any other event that occurs there. And they'll know upfront in their schedule, they have to shut down, they have to clean the thing, of the street up and make it passable for the event, and then open it back up again afterwards. So I mean, there just is no break in where we have a long enough period of time with no activity
Right.
to be able to do that. We will have to work around the schedule, but the fall was the least of the problems.
Sure. And that's helpful. The other question I had is if you would just kind of go over the scope of the entire project for those in the audience who may not have had a chance to be involved in the last three years of discussion of this project, and what all is being done, what improvements are being done, and how much sidewalk damage do we actually have so far? I know there are several places I have seen where the bomanite is broken.
Correct.
Which certainly detracts from the look of our downtown. But what else is being done as part of the improvements?
Well, the boxes that are there are basically in bad enough repair that they will be removed and replaced with a, with a cast box. So that will occur. The trees, the six trees that are the crepe myrtles, will not be removed, though they will work around those. They'll improve the irrigation system. We're able to actually use the existing irrigation mains, though we did not have to horizontal bore new irrigation main in. Will run electricity to the tree wells, so that they will have the opportunity to have lights on the trees, and those will actually run from the adjacent street light, so that when the street light pops on in the evening, the lights in the tree will pop on as well. They'll be on the same switch. So, and then there's repair of the adjacent curbs and bomanite and concrete. Anything that was down there that, in downtown that was damaged is included in to be repaired, so that it all looks consistent and looks, you know, new. So I think, I think I've gotten everything. And then obviously the new trees, installing new tree, or planting new trees.
Okay, that's helpful. I know one of the questions that CPCA has had is access to power for events and things like that, and I think you've got that worked out, if I understand correctly.
We do, yeah. There's, there will be access to power at the existing pool boxes, and CPCA will be able to install power that they will control and, but will be done in concert with the city. So yes, we've worked through that with them.
And there is one box on Center Street that gets repaired as well. It is a Chinese pistachio, but that tree doesn't get touched. There was a larger box there that accommodated the pistachio so far, but that, I think the seating area is what gets repaired on that particular one.
Okay. Any other questions? Council member one?
Just to confirm, the footprint of the boxes is not going to change for any of them?
There will be some that are, we try to increase the footprint of them to give more room to the trees that are in there. It's problematic and very difficult to do, because we're also working around door swings from cars parked, ADA access. I mean, there is a lot of constraints to work in, but yes, we are, we're trying to increase the size of the boxes where we can, and it's not, not a great deal of increase. I mean, you're eking out a few inches here and there.
So for the trees that are remaining, there's no expected future issue, given the nature of those trees? Like, there's not going to be a problem with those box, that size?
Not to the test of our knowledge, no. I think that is a good tree to, you know, to have utilized for that application.
Okay. So in the, in the report, it says there's 12, and six are targeted for full replacement, and six are just the boxes. What about the other boxes? Did we assess those as well?
Which other boxes?
There are several other boxes on Center Drive.
Yeah.
And one of them I mentioned just a moment ago, and it only has minor defects that need to be repaired. The other boxes are in pretty good shape and are not part of this project.
Okay, yeah, because I, I think there's a total, if you count all of downtown, there's like 22?
But some of them are trees.
Yeah, some, some may not have trees, and then there's some that are like connected to the Flora Square building and whatnot, but, so those are not in scope for this.
They're not, they're not part of the scope.
Did we, did anyone, did you do a walkthrough or walk around just to take a look to see if there's anything that may be egregious?
And we will, we'll continue to do that. If there are items that, you know, come up while we have our contractor out there and they need to be addressed, we can do that. But the one that's on Center, you know, needed, needed repair, and we've included in the project, but we looked at the rest and thought, you know, decided that they were, they were, you know, good on their own as they are now.
Okay. Council member Wolf?
I had some of the same questions there with regard to the crepe myrtles that are existing. And so when we put in new crepe myrtles, you know, 20 years ago, they obviously sold us a bill of goods with the Chinese pistachio trees, or whatever they're called. They're obviously 20 years down the road. We're just going to be spending $237,000 on this. It's a concern of mine that we put in the proper tree. And with regard to the box itself, why is it that we put them in boxes as opposed to putting them in the ground?
The, there's utilities that run underneath the sidewalks that are quite shallow, and so by putting the trees in the ground, we would have introduced interference between the tree roots and the utilities. The intent was to just have the, have the tree remain in the box and have separation so that if we needed to repair the utilities in the future.
Does, does anyone have a figure or an idea of what we've already spent to try to keep these things going and/or also sidewalk and street repair?
That'd be difficult to calculate. Over the past 20 years, I know that staff does what they can, just walking around and looking at the area. In just the last few days, I noticed there's been a lot of little patching and repair work done to try to minimize those trip hazards, but it's difficult to keep up with. I noted that there was gaps in some of the walkways that are easily an inch, where a heel from a shoe could easily go in there and cause someone an injury. So the sooner we can address this, the better. Okay, that's all for me now.
Council member Diaz?
Scott, would you go over again, assuming we approve this tonight? When would it start? And you say it end by the calendar year?
That's the intent, that we would finish this by the end of calendar year. So it's a fall project.
Because our, right now, through the middle of September, we have a couple more concerts, and people use those as stopping places, and so that, I would hope we wouldn't disrupt that.
No, and that's what I was saying, where the schedule for the project will be built around the events.
Okay.
And the contractor will know ahead of time what his responsibilities are as far as having the downtown in a condition to be able to support an event, and then he comes back after the fact and
Right, because the Oktoberfest, as you already recognized, is a large event, as Vice Mayor Pierce mentioned. But don't forget, we also have a tree lighting ceremony at the first weekend in December, and that gets a lot of people concentrated into the Grove Park.
Correct.
Want to make sure that remains safe.
Yep, we will, we'll
Great.
be very studious about that.
Okay, thank you. So I do have a couple of speaker cards, but if anyone else wants to speak, just come up afterwards as well. Ann Stanaway?
Wait a minute, you said you weren't going to speak, Ann? I had to hold myself together here. Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton, California. Okay, guys, I know you love your crepe myrtles, but do you love your wine? I want to know. Do you like wine? If you like wine, you hate crepe myrtles, because what lives in crepe myrtles? The glassy wing sharpshooter. And they are keeping them south of San Jose right now. They're going to come here and they're going to destroy the vineyards that are here, okay? So your glassy wing sharpshooters, the county entomologist is going crazy, placing traps all over this place to cope with the crepe myrtle population. So please, get rid of the crepe myrtles. I like them too, they're pretty. But, you know, I like wine too. So, okay, another thing is consider succulents. What's wrong with succulents? There are big succulents out there. And the beauty of succulents is that they have a very, a very compact root system, and they don't, they don't go down deep. They don't have a deep taproot or anything like that. And they don't take a lot of water, and they bloom. So, you know, these are, these are things for you to consider, and I just think you need to rethink the idea. You know, trees are wonderful, but, you know, you've only got these boxes, and your succulents would, your succulents are happy being root bound, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Keith Hayden, 1542 O'Hara. Thank you, Mayor and council. I know that this is an item that the city has been looking at for over three years, actually, as we began to see the damage downtown. But I thought that we should go public with the reminder, really, of the research that's gone into making this decision, because something does need to be done, and it feels as though tonight's step in the process is pretty much the last step. It's approving the work on the planter boxes and new trees. And I wanted to make sure we've truly explored all of the options, because the trees give that Main Street such a beautiful small-town feel. And I don't want the citizens of Clayton to be surprised when they see the trees coming down. And I want them to, this has been a very public process, where all of the research that was done, that basically resulted in the recommendation that you're dealing with tonight. Option three did spell out using a certified arborist to really make sure there's no other solution to the removal of the six trees that are being proposed for removal. We can't look at trimming the roots or doing anything to those, the root systems that are causing the damage. And I know new things are being tried with trees nowadays, and they have discovered, certainly with established trees like these are, sometimes there's ways to mitigate the damage that the roots are doing. So I want to make sure we've truly explored that, because I'd hate to come back in three or four years and have arborists share with us that we could have saved those trees, saved our downtown look, if we had really explored all of the options. So the three things we're looking at really are the roots themselves and the damage they're causing to the planter boxes and the sidewalks. So one thing we should consider is how important are those planter boxes? Would removal of the planter boxes reduce the damage that the city is exposed to that's resulting in this? And you heard a little discussion on some of the potential damage to the wiring and utilities, so that would have to be considered. But the planter boxes themselves are the major item that's being damaged that needs to be repaired, and either repaired or removed. Many cities have, have trees downtown that don't have planter boxes. So planter boxes do have both benefits, both visually, and it does keep the roots up out of the ground as much for causing damage, and to give us another opportunity for water and power to those locations. So those are all considerations that need to go into it, and then the sidewalks, certainly. We don't want to constantly be in the need to repair those sidewalks. So all of this is really meant to explore all of the options before we take what is basically a pretty drastic step of removing those trees that have added the shade and nice look to our downtown area.
Great, thank you.
All right.
And I don't have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to comment on this item, please come up, and please state your name when you do, and you have three minutes.
I'm Howard Kaplan, 1194 Easy Drive, and I would like to suggest that I don't believe all the alternatives have really been fully examined. I think the idea of planting trees in boxes would have been a bad idea 20 years ago and could have been done better. I don't believe that all of the six trees are, that are scheduled to be removed are impinging on utilities. I don't know where the utilities are, what utilities they're talking about. I know that I was told they were going to put water to the trees, but I believe that the water system is working, and then it's a question of spending a lot of money to make uncertain amount of improvements in the scope of what's going on out there. And I would suggest that it would be important to do a detailed review of what the options Just encourage you to, you know, let's take a closer look at this. I've been on TLC for a couple of years, and I know that TLC has not been allowed to see a scope of work or to question any of the plans, and would hope that the city council would encourage the TLC to do a review before it gets to this point here with the city council.
Can you expand on that last comment?
Sit.
I'm inviting you to expand on that last comment. I wasn't clear on what you were saying, when you said that you, the TLC hasn't been what now?
Included in the analysis of this project. What I have seen, and I've only been there a couple of years, was that originally it was a $25,000 scope of work project. And then it was determined that city council wanted to see water and power go to the boxes, and it became a $250,000 project. I asked to see a scope and was told that it had already been approved. I believe TLC approved I believe TLC approved the $25,000 scope, but we haven't seen the $250,000 scope. I thought there were good explanations that were given here, but it feels almost as if the review has been incomplete and not challenged as much as it might have been. The fact that we now have water to the boxes is something that is less, that would need to be done.
Good, thank you.
Does that help? Okay, thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Jim Gamble from Prospector Place. Yeah, I've noticed the eyesores down there, the planter boxes. The tops of those are not really made to be seats, but they're used as seats, and that kind of loosens up those. I work for Building and Grounds in Walnut Creek. But there are variations of the crepe myrtle that are bush, that are like colorful bush style or variety. And I think that would have a lot shallower root base, and it's not going to go down deep. Trees in planters like that and built-in planters never work out well, because 20 years, 25 years down the road, they're just going to bust through. They want to go deeper and they want to go out. So you're hindering them from doing that. That's my only take on it. But there are varieties of crepe myrtle bushes that would be colorful. They, you know, they'd probably be, if they were in the planter, maybe about that tall, and minimal care. And it would fill the box out, too. And you'd still be able to sit around it if the boxes are the same size.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Glenn Miller, 1005 Pebble Beach Drive. Just have a simple question. What is the source of funding?
Okay, let me, go ahead, finish your comments, and then we'll bring it up.
That's my question. What is the source of funding? Is it the general fund? Is it the Landscape Maintenance District? Because if it's a Landscape Maintenance District, they can't afford it. So I just want to know what the source of funding is. During the whole presentation, nobody told us what the source of funding was. I'm ambivalent to the project. I mean, I'll yield to the experts. I just want to know what the source of funding is.
Okay, thank you.
Not going to answer my question?
No, I will bring it back to staff. Let me finish up with other comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And if we could have staff address.
I think this gentleman.
Go ahead, come on up.
Just two things, three things. And really, a follow-up from the last meeting. Last meeting, I asked, you know, I'd like to get a handle, I think everybody would, I'd like to get a handle on major, high-priority programs and projects. What are they? Where can, you know, I don't watch this stuff day-to-day. You work it every day, not your deliverable. That's what you guys do, right? And so where can there be some communication that says, here are the top five projects, programs we're working on? One. And then two, you know, an associated status. What is a status on these program projects? It can be real simple, you know, you got involved in business and all. It can be simply, you know, a red, green, yellow light status. And just simply a one-liner, here's what we're doing, here's the expected outcome, here's our deliverable, and here's the timeline. And where are we? Red, yellow, green, you know? And you can code it any way you want. That would be good to know. Because some, I don't know, my hunch is, some things perhaps fall between the cracks, all right? And that's one. So if you could come up with something, and maybe it's there on the website. I don't see it. If it is, it's a struggle to find it, okay? I can't find it. So it would be very helpful. And then project scope would be a good thing. You know, you guys run project programs, you know, so something simple and economic. Also, I hear that, or from last meeting, there's some subcommittee work taking place. You know, subcommittees are supposed to get engaged in some type of process to assist the selection of a city manager, and a selection, there's another high-priority item, I've already lost with the priority item, the city manager and the identity thing, okay?
So sir, this is regarding the planter box item? So if you can.
Oh, the planter box?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm hearing some good stuff about that. Right on. Congrats. That's great. Okay? So, if I heard you correctly, yeah, that's good. But I'd like to just find out, the subcommittee that are being formulated, what, how are they formulated? You know, who's engaged? How are they engaged? And what's their deliverable, right? And what is the process? And so if there's a subcommittee, you know, what kind of, you know, authority, decision-making, influence do they have? You know, is there, you know, a policy in that? I don't know, okay? And again, if that website has that information, wonderful, but make it's not easy to obtain that, even if it's there. You guys know. Tell us straight out, okay? You know, here's our stat, I don't want to be redundant. So anyway, so knowing that will enable engagement, all right? Because, to be honest, I want to get engaged. You know, I've not been engaged, I should be, in terms of a citizen, I think all of us, for that matter.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment. And if I could ask staff to comment, I think there were at least a couple of questions. One was regarding the TLC's scope of work, or their review of the scope of work, and the other one was regarding the funding. Would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just start with the funding. On page two of the staff report, the last line, it details specifically the fund that's being utilized, and that is the funds that come from the landscape and, excuse me, the Trails and Landscaping Funds. The other question that you were asking about was the scope of work. Every time we advertise a project, there is a complete package with the scope of work available as a public document for review for anybody who's interested in it. It is a document that is usually too big to put online. I'm assuming it was not online, but it's always available for review by the public or any bidder that wants to take a look at that. I believe there was several sheets, maybe seven to 10 sheets on this particular document, plus a set of specifications. So it's a thick document to review, much like the council packet, except probably a little thicker. It's usually reviewed primarily just by those that are bidding on it, because they want to know exactly what they're getting into when they enter into a contract to complete the project.
Yeah, and I think the question may have been about the Trails and Landscaping Committee, if they've reviewed that scope of work. And that goes back a little bit, maybe our assistant city manager. Perfect. Ms. Hoffmeister.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As was mentioned, I think some of it is acronyms. Scope of work is, can be interpreted as many different things. The TLC reviewed what was needed in terms of the improvements, which you heard today. The boxes were broken, we were going to go repair and enlarge where possible, and then if the trees could be saved, we would, and if trees needed to be removed, they would. There was an arborist that had looked at this with then Mark Janney, our maintenance supervisor, and said, I can't see anything until the boxes are broken open. And once they're open, we'll be able to determine. But it looks like, worst-case scenario, what was put in the report was, six trees would need to be removed of the Chinese pistachio. So that was the generic scope of work that was discussed at the TLC meeting at various times. Scope of work also could be interpreted, meaning the detailed construction plans and specifications. And that's what came out of some of the discussions at the TLC, that they wanted to see and have input on the plans and specifications. And as some of the council members recall, there was a report that was presented by the TLC chair that came to the council to get clarification on their roles, responsibilities, and duties, and what level of review should they have. And it was determined that plans and specifications and construction documents are a staff implementation item. The council doesn't even see those. They were put together, as was mentioned, by the city manager for purposes of obtaining bids. So the scope of work they did have is very similar without the photographs, but most of them had seen the planters downtown. We had talked about that. And to back up even further, it was $35,000 or $36,000 that was in the budget that the TLC had originally recommended to do repairs. At the time, this is going back three years ago, the planter boxes were in disrepair. It was thought that maybe some repairs could be made, but as it came forward to the City Council, there was more time taken by staff with the then-city manager to take a look at the details of those boxes, along with our former city engineer at the time, and determine that, you know, it needs more than just patching. And there was desire to have electricity put into it by the council, as well as to make sure that we had proper irrigation. So the budget adjustment was recommended by the city manager to be a $300,000 repair and replacement of the boxes, including electricity and irrigation. Since then, we've been able to find that there is irrigation that has been put back into service by our new maintenance supervisor, Jim Warburton. So some of those areas have already been addressed, and then the electrical, providing the outlets in each of the boxes to be able to have the lights. So there was a change in the overall scope from repair to, gee, it's going to need more than repair. And since we're having to open up the boxes, now's a good time to include electricals to meet some of the needs of the downtown. And so that had changed between the TLC meeting to the full City Council meeting. But since then, the scope of the work has been to replace the planter boxes, enlarge them of the 12, enlarge them where possible, remove the Chinese pistachio if need be, because you won't be able to, we had an arborist, Mark Janney had an arborist come out there, our former maintenance supervisor. Arborist said, I can't see anything in the roots until you bust open all the planter boxes. So when we get to that point, if there are abilities, as was mentioned, and we find that there's not a problem, I think the trees will be able to be retained. But we don't know until we open up the boxes, and that's what is going to be the first step of the contractor when he gets out there.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Do we still maintain that position that we won't know until we open it? Because from the presentation, I got the impression that if we move forward with option one, it's a certainty that we would remove the six.
Let the city engineer address that.
I'm hearing doubt when you say that, so I'm not clear.
My understanding is that.
Let me go ahead and take a shot at that. So in many of the cases, these boxes are very small, and the trunks of the trees are only inches away from the sides. In those cases, the likelihood of salvaging the tree is very, very small, if not at all. There are a couple of boxes that are larger, is it one or two? Two that are a bit larger, where we'll take a look at it and see if it's possible. But as I heard from one of the council members over here, the last thing we want to do is rebuild the box, spend all of this money, and be back in front of you in a year or two, and say, yeah, we made a mistake. Now that box is broken again, because the tree has grown further, and push that box over. So we'll be very cautious about making that decision once it's opened it up.
Okay, great. So I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and any decision. Who would like to start? Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, I'll jump in. You know, those Chinese pistachio trees are absolutely gorgeous. But the planter boxes and the sidewalk and the pavement around them are becoming a real mess. And a trip hazard in some cases, which staff is going to have to continually be after and be patching and working on that. So much as I hate to lose those gorgeous trees, I guess I'd rather have some consistency of the trees in downtown. I would hate to replace four that we know are super tight, and then leave two that don't match anything else. I mean, if you're going to do it, let's do it and make them consistent. I am a little concerned about the idea of the crepe myrtles being host to glassy wing sharpshooters, but maybe we can get a little bit more information back on that. And if there is some other treatment there that we can use, I happen to have two crepe myrtles in my yard, and they're not my favorite tree by any stretch of the imagination. Although, they are pretty at certain times of the year, but I'm not a huge fan of crepe myrtles, but the root ball is a whole lot smaller. And they're not as invasive. And frankly, we have to think long-term. I can tell you just anecdotally that I had not 24-inch box trees put in my yard when we re-landscaped it in the summer of '09. They were probably five-gallon trees, they were fairly small, and they are now huge. They are probably 20 feet tall. And they are gorgeous when they are pretty. I mean, they're, like I said, not my favorite tree, but that's what the landscaper put in, and I decided to live with it. But, you know, I think we have to look long-term. And replacing the six Chinese pistachio now with crepe myrtles that will grow quickly, they will fill in, they will start to look similar to the rest of downtown, it'll make a statement. And I think that's really important. As far as the planter boxes on Center Street, my only comment there is, the ones that don't have trees in them, I think that's great. The only concern I have is sometimes the plantings in them get a little tall, and a couple of those are taller, I think, than some of the ones on Main Street to start with. So they cause just a bit of a view issue from the stop sign on Morris or Diablo. At least for some of us, short people, sitting in a regular car, not up in some SUV. So I'd like us to keep an eye on that. That really doesn't have to do with this contract, but it is a concern sort of related to planter boxes. So much as I hate to do it, I think the overall improvement in being able to get downtown looking nice again is good. The improvements with the lights will be absolutely spectacular when we come to wintertime to be able to have lights on those trees and things like that. And for future events, I think it'll be really good. So much as I hate to lose those pretty trees, I think it's better that we fix it all at once.
Okay. Councilmember Wolf.
Well, I guess the question is going to go back to, what is the right thing to do here? The crepe myrtle trees, they're going to match the other crepe myrtle trees. To Ms. Stanaway's point, I wouldn't want to see them destroy the vineyards. However, my neighbor just put in two, and there are tons and tons of them everywhere in this city. I'm not sure that six more trees is going to make that much of a difference. You know, again, I just want to make sure that this is the right tree to put in. Example being, the tree we just had to take out again on our hill down in the entrance to, into the city, which was our Christmas tree, and we lost another one. To me, it'd be better if we would spend the money and put a Joel Clayton statue there, you know, welcoming to the city. At least we know it would be there, and it's not going to die. So I just want assurances that, one, that the crepe myrtle is the right tree to put in, so that when you're down the road, we're not back here doing this again. And also, I'd like to include the TLC in some way in the scope of work going forward. After all, I think that they have a vested interest in doing that, and wherever they could be included, I would like to see them be included.
Okay. Councilmember Diaz.
Address, I know that a couple of the constituents here, the citizens, mentioned funding for this, and I want to make sure everybody understands, if they look at the report, the city engineer has looked at the Landscape Maintenance District, and this particular area has nearly $246,000 available, of which, at this point, $237-plus is being directed at this. So it's in the report, there's adequate funds already designated for this project.
Yeah, I think this is, I think there's been a budget line item on the TLC budget for several years, if I recall correctly. It was passed on last year just due to other administrative stuff. I think I would echo Councilmember Wolf's comment about involving the TLC. I think that's a good idea, to the extent possible. I was kind of, that's why I asked you to expand on it, because I was kind of surprised to hear that they weren't involved kind of each step of the way. I mean, that's why they're there. I mean, I do think that we have evidence that the crepe myrtle is a workable tree in that type of structure, simply because there's existing ones that have been there for quite some time. So that's pretty good evidence that they'll be okay. If we don't do, move forward now, does this, what is the next, what's the next available window, you think, to execute on it? If we decide that we should delay to get more information? If we do that now, then it sounds like this project will take some time, it's going to extend through the end of the year, and then you have the regular weather. So it sounds like you would push it several months, probably at least until the next year. Does that sound right? I guess that's a question.
Yeah.
Well, let me just jump in. So if we don't award this contract within a certain amount of time, it has to be rebid. So if we don't award this contract within a certain amount of time, it has to be rebid and we'd have to start over searching for contractors. In addition to that, if we don't award this contract tonight, my first call tomorrow morning is going to be to our maintenance supervisor to go out and address some of those trip hazards that we put on record tonight, because we are clearly aware that there's a problem out there. We have to do something about this. So we will start patching and spending money that will be a temporary fix or we will award a contract and go forward with a more permanent one. I don't think we have a choice.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, as far as the TLC committee, that's traditionally got an ex officio member on it, which is usually the vice mayor. And I serve in that position since last winter. And we have had at least one meeting that talked about this project pretty extensively as to the concept of what the project was, the reason for the project, the need for the project. And frankly, it's something that's been talked about over the last three years. And the council's certainly been aware of it. The committee has evolved and changed somewhat, but it is still members of that oversight committee that have been involved in these discussions. And I just want to reiterate, it's really not our job as laypeople to write the specifications for a contract that needs to be bid. It is to look at the policies involved and to overview the costs. And so I think that's been done several times at the TLC. It's certainly been talked about here repeatedly and I think it's time to fish or cut bait. And I think right now, we need to replace these trees and replace those planter boxes and fix the problems in our sidewalks and our pavement and make our downtown look nice again. And with that, I would move the item.
If I may add further and I agree with staff, as I said, we have a growing safety problem out there. And for somebody that's out at our concerts every other Saturday night, people are congregating around them and fortunately, to this point, nobody has stumbled or fallen because of the sidewalk condition or those pieces of brick that are jetting off from there that need to be addressed. So that alone, in my view, tells me that we need to move forward on this.
Okay.
Okay, and just one final thing. I'm glad that we were able to bring this to the public view. I wasn't a member of the council last time when this was discussed and so it's nice to be able to have the public be able to comment on this. But I will say that the PR campaign for us going forward, we have to make sure that the public understands that we're going to be doing this and that it's going to happen during, possibly during Oktoberfest as well, so people aren't surprised by this whole thing. And that's it.
Okay, so I do have a motion on the table. Is there a second for that?
What is the... If we, I guess, just to further expand, if we don't approve and then we'd have to rebid, is there like... How... What's the maximum amount of time we can go before we start the project?
It's a 60-day maximum before the contractor has the ability to pull their bid off the table. Keep in mind, in this particular project, we only got one bid.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a second. I'll second that then. So it's been moved and seconded. Let's take a vote unless there's further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the next item. We do not have any recognitions in presentation. Let's go through our reports. No Planning Commission or Trails and Landscaping Committee report. City manager, any report?
None tonight.
None, okay. And then we'll go on to city council reports. Let's start with Councilmember Diaz, please.
Thank you. Well, we've got quite a few things since we did not have a meeting earlier in the month. So I'm going to be a little lengthy, so excuse me. But first, on the 20th of July, we had a concert. Then on the 24th, we had a car show, all of which are being attended rather well. We wrapped up the barbecue meeting on the barbecue... Excuse me, the project on the 27th. I attended the Sheriff's Posse's annual barbecue over at the Fairgrounds on the 28th, played in the Mudville 21st Annual Golf Tournament on the 29th. Then, the one thing I was really pleased to do on Saturday, the 3rd of August, in addition to having a concert that day, we welcomed home a 27-year service gunnery sergeant from the Marine Corps. I wish I had saved the materials for what this gentleman had accomplished in all those years, but I want to tell you, it was very rewarding, heartwarming to recognize an individual. In fact, the Veterans Association was there, a number of other civic groups were out there and we had a grand entrance for him to return, his wife and family. It was absolutely amazing and I wish I could relate the ribbons and awards this gentleman had received. We had the concert later that evening for Apple Z. I've met a couple of times with the interim city manager regarding the direction of staff, council and tonight's meeting. We had another car show on the 7th, which was probably the best one attended all year. Tomorrow night, we have our final one. But we had the Veterans Center of Contra Costa County on their information vehicle out there and they handed out more information to people, that people who are veterans that are in our community, that came out to see and find out, not only about the cars, but what the veteran services can offer. Attended the grand reopening of the Bachi Courts on the 9th. We attended last Friday a meeting with our state senator and a number of other representatives from throughout the Contra Costa County area. He brought two messages back from the state Capitol. The governor has made housing a top priority. So I just mentioned that to stand by, not so much for Clayton, because we only have a very limited amount of space remaining to be developed, but other cities are going to have a little bit, maybe a helping hand that they may or may not want. He also mentioned, Senator Glazer also mentioned, that the governor set aside over a billion dollars for homelessness, which is becoming a major problem. In fact, what was mentioned at our meeting was, I didn't realize this, but in Antioch at several of the schools, there's over 400 students attending there that they are actually homeless. Same thing is true, I understand from our discussion with the city manager, that the Community College of Los Madanos has many students out there that are moving around from automobile to automobile just to attend school because they have no place to live. So it's a growing issue that we're all going to be faced with at some point. And we know we have a very small impact to that by the homeless people that are... That seem to be congregating every once in a while around Clayton Station. Another concert last Saturday night and I want to thank all the volunteers that came out and our concert promoter was not there, but I want to particularly thank Vice Mayor Julie Pierce, between she and I and my good friend here, Mr. Carl Wolf, who probably collected the most money that night.
Yeah, but that's because Julie had to leave early.
I know, but it was great. We collected over $1,800, which we want to thank everybody, which gives us funding for further years out for our concerts. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay, right after the last city council meeting. By the way, I just want to welcome our interim manager, Joe. Got a chance to meet with Joe and got to know him a little bit. And I've seen him at Panera, I think, 63 times now. Let's see. Also had the pleasure of meeting with one of our citizens here to walk Peacock Creek with Jim Warburton to take a look at our V-ditches and some of the blockages there. Had Oktoberfest meetings, several Oktoberfest meetings over the last month or so. Emails from citizens, like always. I attended the CBCA meeting at Oakhurst and reported on the city business, since you guys were out of town. On the 1st of August, sat in for the mayor at the mayor's conference in Brentwood, where we talked a great deal about the census 2020 and how important that is with regard to counting everyone and how much that goes into our funding and things we're going to... Very important to even a little place like Clayton. I think there are some very simplistic ideas. They're going to have a lot of work to do with regard to how they're going to count everybody. There's a lot of optimism, but I think sometimes it may be a little cockeyed at this point. So I think they have some work to do on how that's all going to happen. Went to the concert in the Grove to raise money on the 3rd of August. Think we did pretty well, but I think Debbie Geller beat me by 30 bucks or something. But again, thanks to the citizens, we're continuing to raise money. I think what you don't know is that the concerts in the Grove sponsors don't sponsor the entire concert series. That's just a portion. So a good majority of it comes from people donating at concerts. And so I did that also on the 10th. On the 9th, we had KTVU come to town and I was able to do an interview there with KTVU at our Bachi Courts and represent not only the CBCA, but the city as well. So that was a lot of fun. And then that evening, attended the re-grand opening of the Bachi Courts. Met with the CBCA president, again, had another Oktoberfest meeting. And let's see, what else? Did some calls the other day with constituents on Sunday and I met with the city manager again on the phone today and now we're here. And tomorrow, I have the Library Foundation meeting.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
I'll try to be quick. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority has been meeting weekly to put together the new transportation expenditure plan. Also attended numerous other meetings of a subcommittee and conference calls with the stakeholders, trying to come to agreement on what should be included in a package. Transpac, which is our central county transportation group, has had two meetings regarding the same items. I also met with the Association of Bay Area Governments. We had our executive board meeting and finance committee meetings. We had an Association of Bay Area Governments and Metropolitan Transportation Commission governance meeting to discuss how we may possibly go forward with regard to a potential merger or not. That's just starting. This was our first meeting of that, which was included in a memorandum of understanding that we signed two years ago. I had a California Council of Governments Board conference call, attended the Bachi Courts reopening, which was wonderful. Attended the East Bay Division meeting, which was also about the census, which was a couple of days before you had your meeting at the mayor's conference. And we had two telephone town halls for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority expenditure plan. Great time with the KTVU zip trip on mornings on two here in Clayton. The weather broke from 100-plus down to a reasonable temperature that day, although the folks that are coming out from the city just thought it was horribly hot at 80 degrees. They were just suffering, which was pretty hysterical to those of us who'd been in 107 the day before. But it was a lot of fun and I think they did a marvelous job of showing off how beautiful Clayton is. And their show is posted on their website as well as on a YouTube video of the entire program. If you didn't get to see it, you can go back and watch it. And the concert last Saturday, we had a great new band doing Creedence Clearwater music and everybody was on their feet from about the first 30 minutes on and rocking and dancing and enjoying themselves. So busy last month.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah. So I met with the... I don't remember the date, but I met with the executive director of Clayton Valley Charter High School to talk about some of the things that the school's done and is planning to do in terms of academics, as well as other certain administrative improvements that continue to be made at the school. I believe that he's looking for community support for the upcoming charter renewal and that will probably be a future item. So I look forward to continuing that discussion with him. I did have some questions posed, so we'll see. We'll see what comes back. I've been following a few ongoing legislative items that I think could be relevant to some folks around town. Currently, there's ACA I, a constitutional amendment to the state constitution, which is being proposed. It's attempting to change the way property tax can be assessed and lower the voter approval necessary to enact these changes. It provides an exemption to the 1% base property tax if money is used for affordable housing and among other items. So currently, it takes a two-third voter approval to pass new taxes. This constitutional amendment would reduce that requirement to 55%. It's currently on the state assembly floor. This is another bill that has state Assembly Member Two and state Senator Weiner's fingerprints on it. These are the same folks who want to create this new quasi-government with AB 147, so that's working through the process right now. SB 330 freezes development fees for five years, even though the fees are meant to cover costs that don't freeze. Another bill by Senator Weiner, which takes away local building to review various development projects. And AB 1763, which is another bill by Assembly Member Two, expanding the California density bonus law for projects that are 100% affordable housing. It gives 80% density bonus over existing zoning and concessions like height setback and parking. If you're close to transit or busing, it would result in all that other stuff, plus it would have unlimited density allowable. So those are some of the housing-related things that I think are important to us and that are moving through the legislature right now. If you have thoughts on any of those, I encourage people to reach out to their assembly and Senate members to voice them. That's it.
Great, thank you. So just very quickly, a couple of items. I was actually out of town for about 10 days, so I missed the zip trip program, which turned out to be really great on... I watched it on YouTube afterwards. But a couple, just a couple of very quick announcements. So Oktoberfest is coming up on October 5 and 6. The volunteer signup form is now live, so if anybody wants to volunteer for a couple hours, it is available. Please sign up. And then the other item is, thank you, Mr. Sobranti for being our current interim city manager, but the search for the permanent city manager is out there pending right now. I believe our search firm is looking for applications by August 26th. And there's also a community survey that any member of the public can fill out that provides any kind of feedback. It asks a couple of questions that then will help the council in our decisions. So if anybody would like to fill out that survey, it is available on the city website. So with that, go ahead.
Sorry, I failed to mention my report that although we had the two messages from the senator coming down to us from Sacramento, unanimously, all of the elected representatives there from Walnut Creek, Antioch, Pittsburgh, Concord and us, sent back the message to the senator, take back with him. We want him to try as best he can to maintain local control. Tough job. He's fighting an uphill battle.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on. Our next item is public comment on non-agenda items. So this is the portion of the meeting when any member of the public can provide up to three minutes comments on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. I do have a couple speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to say anything, please certainly feel free to come up. First, I have Ms. Stanaway.
Anne Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton. I heard a couple of people talk about getting information from the city about various things that are going on in the city and they really wanted some scope of work or things like that. And of course, the city manager was very adept at pointing out that the city does have these documents on file. You request these for your information, people? You request these through a request for public records, through the Public Records Act. All you have to do is email Janet or you can drop by the office. Anyway, you put it in writing, ask for the particular item that you're looking for. Anyway, you put it in writing, ask for the particular item that you're looking for. You don't have to be specific. The Public Records Act actually says that the city must provide you with assistance in identifying the types of records that you really want so that you can obtain the information you want. It's out there, it's available for you. I request these things a lot. And I recommend. The city has these things and even, I have even shown up and copied things from the city library. They bring the books, loads of books full of records for me, and I take my scanner in and I just scan like mad. So all these things are available to you. You don't need to be in the dark. You can know what the city's up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Miller?
Okay, yeah, there are all these public records. Definitely, they're there. But what I'm suggesting is that what can be done that's economic, a lot of people don't have time to go to, you know, to seek these documents and do the research, ask the questions. And all I'm looking for, I think what we're looking for, I'm looking for, is something that's economic and to the point. Here are the five, you know, hot tickets that are being worked on, whatever they are. Here's the scope, here's the budget, here's a deliverable, and here's a timeline. And give me a simple status that says, you know, I don't know, code it any way you want, red light, you know, green light, yellow light, and have some coding that says what that's spelled. Economic and to the point. Don't have the, you know, time to do that kind of, you know, research, et cetera. It's at your fingertips. That can be done easily by any one of your staff, any one of you, right? Or if you want to delegate it, fine. And then, and the other thing, last thing I'd say on that is, you know, who owns this stuff? Who's the project manager, right? You know, and who owns it? And so there's accountability. And also be proud of the work that's done. Look at this. We accomplished this, we achieved this, under budget. And look at all these string of green light. So anyway, I just wanted to.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Catalano and council. I'm kind of here on a follow-up to my last time I was here, which I think was July, the meeting you had in July. Just a little bit of a background. Back in April this year, I reached out to both councilmember Juan and Wolf on three areas of concern. Condition of the paving in Peacock Creek, specifically at the entranceway. A citywide concern that large areas of the landscape maintenance district were not getting attention at a minimum on a yearly basis and in some instances in the past three years. And the jihad scope of work, more specifically, the annual maintenance of the drain inlets and the swales that are in place to protect the hillsides and the properties. Over the course of the next several months, I received responses via emails to Mr. Juan and Mr. Wolf on each of these disputes. First of all, on the paving, "We have the best roads in the county," so said the city manager. Well, if that's the case, he's got a bad consultant. Second of all, "We have the best roads in the county," yet after I came and talked, we had a huge swath, thank you, Mr. Wolf, of our entryway that all of a sudden got torn out properly and repaved. On the jihad, Mr. Napper claimed that he had been doing this every year annually. We'll get back to that in a minute. At your July meeting, though, you actually approved the budget of the jihad. And we talked about that. And Mr. Juan, very graciously, suggested that there ought to be some more transparency and review of what actually was done. On that instance, Mr. Wolf and I met with Mr. Warburton, who's doing an excellent job, by the way, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And although Mr. Wolf mentioned that he went to the meeting, he didn't mention what we found. What we found is the swales that I specifically referenced that Ms. Hoffmeister had no idea were there. And Mr. Napper insisted had been cleaned and had it basically in writing to Mr. Juan and Mr. Wolf said that they had been cleaned. That was a false statement. He had been deceiving you for at least 10 years. They had not been touched. Mr. Warburton then agreed to meet me on the next day, and he actually spent the time in the morning of the next day actually looking at some plans to see what the actual scope of work was. And then we went down, and this is just in Peacock Creek, mind you. This is not citywide, and I know it's in citywide. We took a look at what was going on and we found that, yes, again, that was a deception. Mr. Napper had not been cleaning it, yet he had been taking the funds.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I'm not done, and I'm going to stay here until I get done. I'm going to talk about the landscape maintenance district.
I want to provide every member of the public equal opportunity.
Yeah, that's fine. You know what? I'm going to talk about the landscape maintenance. In this instance, I'm going to talk about some praise to Mr. Warburton. I talked about at that meeting the fact that the area on Clayton Road beyond the fountain has never been taken care of for years and years and years. Yet Mr. Warburton has come out and he's taken care of that area. He has spent much more time than has been allocated. We have been going through a systematic plan where all it has been done is cost-based. Mr. Diaz, you just fell into the trap. And I understand you just looked at that number on a spreadsheet and you said, oh, he's got $238 extra thousand, and let's just go ahead and spend it. Problem is, Mr. Warburton doesn't have $238 extra thousand because he's going to have to make up for all the work that hasn't been done in the last 10 to 15 years.
Thank you.
You know what's the final, you know what's the consistent part about the last 10 to 15 years on this council? Right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Oh, by the way, I have my letter of praise, and I'd like to enter that into the record.
Go ahead. Thank you. Amy Heinz-Schaik?
Honorable mayor and members and esteemed staff, hello. My name is Amy Heinz-Schaik, and I have been a Clayton resident since 2012. I live in the Regency Meadows area. We are here to support our mayor. So all Clayton residents who are here to support our mayor, please raise your hands. Very tall and proud here. Thank you very much. We just wanted to say that the city of Clayton has been in the national news, unfortunately, twice in the past two years for residents who publicly have expressed racist and white supremacist sentiments. And we are here to say that Clayton doesn't only have to be in the national news for racist and white supremacist sentiments, there are other folks who live here too. And we exist and we're proud of ourselves for being together. And it's not actually good enough to be simply silent and non-racist, to be self-congratulatory that you yourself are not racist. It actually is important to be actively anti-racist. And we want to say thank goodness for our mayor, Mayor Tuya Catalano, because she has embodied the principles contained in the amazing book, How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi. I actually don't know if you've even read the book, but it is an amazing book and you embodied those sentiments. And we kindly appreciate you. We are actively anti-racist too, and we won't be painted as if Clayton is uniformly bigoted and exclusionary. We are a diverse and inclusive community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to comment. Mr. Campbell?
Hi, Campbell from Prospector. When Mr. Diaz was talking about the land of the housing problem situation, we talked about the downtown lot here, where we support a lot of our festivals and downtown events, car show, soapbox derby, et cetera, et cetera. In the past, both CW and Mr. Diaz and I believe Jeff, Juan, support possibly putting that land on a ballot initiative to keep it from being developed. And I believe both of you on this side have talked about needing to lock down that land so the state can't make us develop it into high-density housing or some type of other configuration that's not conducive to supporting the festivals and what Clayton residents want. But Julie Pierce as vice mayor and before as mayor and 27-year incumbent city council person helped develop all of these things that are going through state legislature right now. And she snuck off and had a secret meeting with state officials, even at the behest of some of the people on ABAG that found out after the fact and did a sneaky thing like that with a group of some of the ABAG officials. And so, and they've got money issue things going on now. I just think that it's a bad, when this Land Use Committee Subcommittee comes up, she better not be on it because I think it's a huge conflict of interest and I think every one of you should consider long and hard before they put her on that Subcommittee, like her and Tuya were on the other one for selecting city manager. They shut the rest of them out, and I think we all remember how that went. So when she's on the Land Subcommittee, I'll be down here because it'll stir up a hornous nest and I will get other people to come down here too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have to correct the record. I was not in a sneaky meeting with Assembly Member Two. I was appointed by the president of ABAG to serve on a Subcommittee to try to negotiate a better piece of legislation that the folks in the Bay Area might be able to tolerate instead of the legislation he had originally proposed. As a result of those meetings, very collaborative meetings, with my colleagues on ABAG and on MTC, we have negotiated a bill that is stripped completely of the original language and has new language that has been written by ABAG and MTC. When it comes out in print, we will see whether it includes everything. We hope it does. If it does not, we will oppose it. So, and just for the record, the mayor and I were appointed by this council to help select the recruiter, not the city manager. And this is not a time for discussion, so I just corrected the record.
I think my three minutes are still going, actually, but...
That's actually not the way it works.
You're out of order, Mr. Campbell.
It's really interesting that you helped develop CASA, the CASA Compact, and then you voted for it. You voted for that CASA Compact, okay? As part of that, as part of your part on ABAG and on MTC. And those are the organizations that you belong to. They are. Because some of the other ones has nothing to do with their sex.
Mr. Campbell, thank you. Can you please?
And the other representatives on ABAG were taking you on in videos on the ABAG website about your sneakiness.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. Thank you, everyone, for providing comment. Councilmember Juan?
I would just like to comment very briefly. We had a long recess between our last meeting, but there's a few things that went on around town that I think a lot of folks were interested in. You know, just to speak clearly, comments like what you had mentioned, send her back, they don't represent who we are. This, and the more popular, go back where you came from. It has a long history as a race-based insult, and it's often directed towards Asian people. So racism, bigotry, they have no place in public discourse. So we may disagree from time to time, but on this matter, there is no disagreement whatsoever. Speaking out against these things is always okay. And so this is the same lesson that I teach my kids. If you see something that is wrong, then speak up. So it's my hope that these type of conversations raise awareness and hopefully increase understanding about the importance of treating others with respect.
So let's move forward. So item seven is public hearings. We do not have any. Item 8A is our first action item, which is the discussion and consideration of preparation options of the city council meeting minutes. And I believe, Mr. City Manager, we have some report from you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, we will be discussing the topic related to preparation of city council meeting minutes. Following the July 16th meeting, our city clerk had the opportunity to reach out to many cities throughout our county and was able to get a response from 14 of them on their practices on how they keep their meeting minutes. Eight of those responded as doing action minutes. Another six responded as doing summary minutes. One city noted that they actually outsourced through a contract basis to have someone prepare their minutes on behalf of the city at a cost of approximately $12,000 per year. I want to explain also that each city may define the difference between action minutes and summary minutes very differently. Let me give you an example of what I mean. In your packet, our city clerk provided a handful of examples. So one of the examples she provided was the June 18th minutes here from the city of Clayton. And there happens to be on page four and five, some reference to a public hearing and the comments that were made at that time. I kind of went through that and looking at it, I saw that in many cases, it was at least 10 or so words and always included the name, address, and kind of the position that was taken by the speaker. But in some cases, it was as many as 70 words that were detailing what was said by the speaker. So it was pretty significant in detailing. We are calling our minutes, if at this point, a reduced summary minutes. Now, this is just a term. But let me compare to what, for example, the city of Hercules did on also a public hearing item that shows up on their packet on page three. They had a public hearing, they opened it, and they listed the name of the speaker. And that's all they listed on theirs. So I bring this point to your attention just to demonstrate that not all cities do things the same. We are certainly not the least in terms of how detailed our minutes are. We're probably not the most either. Some cities may be doing very verbatim-type minutes. But as you know, on the city's website, we are also including a video taken from each of the council meetings. Now, recently, councilmember Juan suggested a very good suggestion, and that was to convert the minutes that we have on our website to a searchable form of minutes so that if somebody wanted to get onto the website and find something, say they had a friend named John Smith, let's say, that spoke on a particular item, you could put in a search for John Smith, his name would pop up on the item that he speaks on, and you'd be able to go to the video, which is broken down into 10 separate sections, and find exactly where this person was speaking and be able to see exactly what the person had to say. It's not the same as having a detailed set of minutes, but it does give you the ability to kind of track what was said and by who in a pretty efficient fashion. I want to give credit to councilmember Juan for pointing that out to us. That conversion has already taken place. I'm not saying it's perfect yet. I think we're still working on refining it a bit, but it's already been implemented and we think it makes our minutes a little bit easier to trace and search. So with that in mind, what I'm suggesting is that when you take our video and couple that with the minutes that we have and the agendas and the minutes now being searchable, we believe that what we have in place is sufficient and in many cases, far more detailed than some of the other cities in our area. And also, the last thing I want to point out is that our city clerk, who's putting these minutes together, is spending about three to four hours per meeting, putting the minutes together as you see them today. In the past, it was more. She was spending closer to nine or 10 hours per meeting. Also, I want to point out that she's not just our city clerk, she also is our entire human resources department. And she also provides backup to the... And she also provides backup to the counter, which is, if I'm, if I recall correctly, yesterday she handled counter customers for the first two hours of her day because for a period of time, she and I were the only ones in City Hall. So when we talk about her time as being precious, we keep a very small staff and they're very efficient at getting a lot of things done. But if we can stay efficient with the meeting minutes the way we're preparing them now, I think that, that gives us the ability to best serve our community. The only action item on this for me was to present this to you and really recommend that we continue as, as we have in the past few months in the way we prepare our minutes. Obviously, our, our city clerk is here and available to answer any specific questions, but I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions by the council members of staff?
So I brought this up, is this the time to...
Do you have questions? But let me take public comment this minute.
No questions.
Okay. No questions, so let me open up a public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please step up. Ms. Stanaway.
Anne Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton, California. There's, there's a bit of information missing here, and that is that on one specific meeting in January of 2019, there were no, there was no video taken that I know, well, I know there wasn't. It was a special meeting, remember the special meeting in January? There was no video taken at that meeting. Therefore, what we had was we had summary minutes, and those minutes did not address some very significant items that were discussed during that meeting that the public really needed to know about. This is what's, this is what's really difficult about this. I, I understand that you want to couple the video with the summary minutes, or whatever you want to call these minutes we have now. I understand that desire. However, we do have times when that falls apart because we just don't have the video going during the special meeting. It was in City Hall that we had that meeting. So I'm just saying that this is not a real good solution when you have comments that are made by the City Manager that are so significant and can be brought to the courts and the city can't defend itself on this, okay?
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion.
Well, I, I asked for this item on the agenda, so I'll kick us off, I guess. The reason why I was raising this is because, well, first, I'm recommending two things. I, I think we should commit to producing discussion-style minutes, something similar to what we had in the past. I, I, I take your point that some of the terms are loosely defined, so I would, I would consider what we had up through about March to be called discussion-style minutes just for the sake of discussion. And then I would call what we have now action minutes, which is kind of how I've, how I've seen the, the minutes described. Action minutes records the votes. It does give comment on who spoke from the public, but it doesn't really capture the nature of discussion on how we got to the votes. So that's just level setting. The, you know, during a previous meeting, there's a discrepancy in one of the, one of the, the draft minutes, and so we pulled it from the consent calendar. And at that time, I think it was mentioned to use action minutes, and I wasn't familiar with that term, so that's why, that's, I think that's where the, where this came from. So to me, the, you know, I think the current style of minutes elides over some important aspects of our meetings. It's not enough, I don't think it's enough to say that people can just watch the videos. People, I mean, certainly we are not required to provide this level of minutes. I think what we're doing is perfectly, comports with what is required. However, you know, our meetings can be like, right now, we're going on an hour and a half, and some of our meetings can be two or even three hours. I, I think that's a significant time investment for, to ask of people to become familiar with what is going on. If you contrast that with what we previously had, you can read the excellent minutes that were prepared by our city clerk, and a three-hour meeting could be read in 10 minutes. And so to me, the benefit to the public in transparency and being able to, being able to digest information very quickly is, is a diffuse benefit with unfortunately a concentrated cost on our city clerk. Now, with only the minutes as we have now, the action-style minutes, you don't see any nuance, you don't see the rationale for the, for the, any decisions that's made. And to me, that reduces overall transparency. It makes it more difficult for the residents to be informed about what's happening or what decisions, why we make certain decisions. And as an example, if you look at our April 16 meeting, that was one of our longer meetings, that's where we discussed CASA. That was a, just that CASA section alone was about an hour of discussion. So we, we all were able to share our thoughts and, and I think that was, that was a great discussion. Actually, sorry, my mistake. That discussion was two hours long. And, but from the minutes, the only thing that the minutes say are, you know, myself, Councilmember Juan presented a staff report following questions by the council. Vice Mayor Pierce invited Mr. Paul to provide an update. And then there's a summary of some of the public things, which, the public comment. After that, it just says, "Following further discussion by the council, City Manager Napper noted that Councilmember Juan will prepare a letter," and so on. And so that, that's it. Nothing indicates what our thought process was or how we reached our conclusions. And so to me, if we want to inform our residents, it, it does a disservice to them, say, "Well, you need to watch the video of this two-hour discussion to really digest what their elected representatives, where they're coming from." So I would say that as to the first recommendation, we should move, or we should commit to doing discussion-style minutes. One way, and I, I do recognize there's a, a large administrative burden, so I think one way we could alleviate some of this burden is through technology. And I've seen a few different platforms that could assist us in having more informative minutes. They all cost money, of course, and so, and they take time and effort to implement. But, you know, for, for, what I think is a reasonable investment, we could do things like voice, voice-to-text over our minutes. I've, I've explored a few platforms, but I didn't want to get too much into it until we decide what direction we want to go. But I guess my recommendation would be that staff explore, just for feasibility and cost, a solution that could assist us in our commitment that we want to make to maintain discussion-style minutes. So, and I'd be glad to work with staff if that's the direction we want to go.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I'll, I'll provide a couple of comments. So I, I think, so I've only been on the council for two and a half years, so I've only kind of seen in person the minutes very closely for the last two and a half years. But I did go back and I went back as, I just kind of spotted through some of the older minutes, looked at some of the 2012 minutes, looked at the 2013 minutes, looked a couple of the years, 2015, 16, and kind of looked as to how we progressed. And if you look back some of our minutes, back in 2012, 2013, for example, they were definitely much more abbreviated. We, and it's really only been, I think, more recent than we, when we suddenly, little by little, our minutes have morphed into much larger set of minutes. And I think, I think the concern is that I think now they've become, or for, for a little while, they became almost verbatim translations and, and we had some accuracy concerns as well. So then each council member is looking at 10 pages of minutes, having to view the tape to make sure they're accurate since we're voting on those. So there's that concern. But what I'm more concerned about is having our staff spend the limited resources on the minutes. And I have nothing against having accurate minutes. I think they're helpful for a public, but the resource commitment is huge. And what we've started doing since 2016, we also have a video. So that, to me, is definitely more accurate because that also captures the tone and everything else. So for example, if we take the minutes from what's happened in the last hour and a half today, the verbal minute, the, the written minutes are not going to capture some of the other stuff that we observed here today, including tone and everything else. So I do think that if our citizens want to have an accurate representation as to what's happening here, the video is the most accurate way to get that picture. So in terms of technology, there are some devices that will, will, will transcribe what's being said into written words. I've seen it in some other, other cities, and what it transcribes is nowhere near accurate. I think it still requires a lot of staff then to go back and actually correct them. So I don't know that the technology is quite there, there yet. And then I, I saw, for example, given that our city's staff, the time is limited and resources are limited, I think there was a suggestion here that the City of Aranda actually hires somebody to do the minutes. I think they pay $12,000 a year to do that. So that's certainly an option. However, I know our next item is discussion of the safety around schools, and I think the annual cost for having a crossing guard is $12,000 a year. I think to me, I'd rather be spending that money on a crossing guard than getting the minutes when I think the video is the most accurate way to understand what's going in our, in a council meeting. So those are my opinions. I would rather, I think, continue where we've been for a long, long time, with the exception of the last six months, when the minutes sort of morphed into more than they had been traditionally. Council, Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's interesting. I've gone back after seeing the minutes, I've gone back to some of our videotapes, and they are indexed very carefully by item. So in order to avoid reading 10, 12 pages of minutes to get, to try to find what it is I'm interested in, and as the Mayor correctly says, to get the tone and the, the context of the comments, I find it far more helpful to be able to go straight to that agenda item and listen to the discussion. And now that we have minutes that are searchable and we know exactly where in that videotape, time-wise, someone's comments will be, I think that really is very helpful for us to be able to, to send someone to it, to send a link to it, to be able to say, "Here's the minutes, go to one hour and 14 minutes, and there's the, the item, the app that you need to see to answer your question." I think that's really helpful. I, I think it's also a lot cleaner. I think when you have verbatim minutes, the way most of us speak is not as clear as it would be if we had written out our comments. We tend to speak a little less formally, not necessarily in structured sentences that make a whole lot of sense. And when you get back to a banter that goes back and forth, it's really better if someone can see that and understand the comments that are made by everyone and the tone of voice. I think that's really very, very helpful. So I actually think the City Manager's suggestion is a really good one. It is using technology very, very well. We actually have a lot of people who watch our meetings, either live or go to the website after the meeting's over, to look for a specific item that they were interested in. And so I, I think that's really helpful, and to be able to search and find that is, is good. I, too, have used some speech-to-text technology, several different forms, actually, while I was having my father try to record his memoirs, and he was lousy at typing, but he could speak beautifully. And he found several different, we spent a fortune on different softwares trying to find one that really worked. The iPad actually wound up being the best, just FYI. But there were some pretty expensive ones out there that we tried, thinking that they would be very effective, and they weren't. They just weren't. We spent more time correcting the text than we did actually getting it done. So I think there are some real flaws with some of that. I, I like the direction that's being recommended, and I would recommend that that's the way we go.
Councilmember Diaz.
Me or him?
Diaz. You, go ahead.
I want to make sure that we get the essence of what transpires in each meeting, and I think that that's what we're attempting to do here. Just as a matter of interest, I do sit on a rather large nonprofits finance committee and an audit committee in the Bay Area, where we are managing the funds of donors, like all individuals, as well as corporations. And yet, the minutes reflect the essence. And we don't have a lot of staff because we're trying to keep the cost of administration down so that the majority of the money that the entity raises goes, goes out to the desired, desired purpose. So I would support what we're doing. And if you need to see all the detail, as been mentioned here, you can go to the video. And now with this capability of electronically putting in City Manager's name, and you can find out what, what he or she said at that, at that point in time, I think is very valuable.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to have to go back to the fact, we've, we've talked about this already, so I'm going to stand by my comments from last time. And if you go to the video and check off my name and find out what that was, I don't know how that works, but nevertheless, you should be able to find what I said. The only caveat, well, make two caveats. First of all, we have a much smaller staff now than we had the last, and we talked about this, so I'm inclined to not put any more busy work onto Janet. I don't understand why a, a three-hour meeting should turn into a nine or a 10-hour transcribe. And then, secondly, the, the technology, I think we're going to use it in a responsible manner, the, in the way that, that you've come up with this idea and we're talking about today, the indexing. I don't think the technology is, is up to speed yet. I, I took a look at some of the platforms as well. I think it's every third or fourth word is mistaken. You know, it's like the story that the, the parents texted their kids and said, "Your mother and I are going to divorce." And of course, the, the kids are crazy, "What are you talking about?" And it actually said, "Your mom and I are going to Disneyland." So I, I, I think we're going to use the, the technology as it is responsible, as it works today. And if, I'd be open to looking at it down the road if, if the technology catches up. But right now, I think the video's the best way to go.
Okay.
Well, I, I will say that I, technology moves pretty quickly, so I don't, I don't know when the last time you did a look, but that's fine. I, I, I take your point that I, I don't, I'm not talking about verbatim minutes, not in the slightest. And I know that our minutes have expanded over some period of time. And I, what I, what I am asking for is that we do capture the essence of what is being said as you, as you described. The way that we're doing it now doesn't capture anything. I just want to be clear on that. It doesn't capture any discussion whatsoever. It captures no essence, it captures no discussion point, it only captures the vote. It will capture, it does, the way that we're doing now over the past several sessions, it summarizes what, what public comment is, but it does not capture any even summary of what, of what we're saying. So, and I, I tried to give that example for the CASA meeting. It says, "After further discussion." That's it. So it doesn't really talk about what that discussion was, it doesn't talk about your input or my input or anyone's input. It just says, "After further discussion," and then a vote. So, and I, and for my purposes, you know, when I, when I first wanted to get a feel for what was going on at council, the first thing I did was I made the public records request, and because only a limited amount is available online, and I read all the minutes for five years. And I did it in a period of two weeks. And there's no, that would be, that would be impossible to do from video. I read every word and every minutes for five years. And so I think, and, and that got me up to speed as, as, about as quick as you're going to get. And so to me, that's what we're taking away from the, the public conversation. And it's, it's totally true. It's, it's, what we're doing now is fine. It's, I mean, it's, there's nothing, you know, it's, it's an available option to us. But I do think it, it reduces overall transparency when we have less information rather than more. So, and I, I take it that you guys are, have said your piece, so thank you.
Okay, so there's no recommendation from staff to do anything, so it is an item that any, obviously, council member could make a motion on or other...
So I would move that we commit to discussion-style minutes and that we seek technology to help us do that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second for that?
So it goes.
Seeing none. So I think with that, it, it then will move on and, yeah. So we'll move on to item 8B, which is a discussion of, on traffic and pedestrian safety around Monte Apple Elementary School and Diablo View Middle School. And I believe we do...
And I believe we do have a staff report from Mr. Sobranti, which I believe is, this is an item that we had requested to come back with some additional information from staff. So, Mr. Sobranti, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you mentioned, we do have a, a quick staff report. I'm gonna hand it over to our city engineer again, Scott Allman. It is timely, because the opening of school was just last week. So with that, Scott?
Thank you. So bringing this back to you and answering questions for you about pedestrian safety around the schools, some of the things that we have done, one of the things that, you know, we've reached out to the schools and, and are having an ongoing conversation between the schools and the city staff, asking them if there are issues or items that they see that they want help with, and, and kind of vice versa. So it's an ongoing relationship, and I think, I think it's one that we will be keeping going and have, be growing stronger, you know, as, as time passes. It's, we've also agreed we're gonna collaborate, and, because for everybody's biggest concern is pedestrian safety, and we want to improve that everywhere we can, every way we can. One of the things that we'll do is, is just kind of a spot check of going out, you know, we, we had Sergeant Shaw and we had Lynn Filson, our traffic engineer, there on the first day of school, watching to see what happened. And they both had observations. I think Lynn's gonna share some observations with us here in a, in a few minutes. But we'll go back in a couple of weeks, when things have settled down a little bit, and, and check again, and see, are there changes? Is, are there things that are, you know, now are going wrong, are people learning bad habits, or are they learning good habits? Check in with that. So, and then the last thing is to look, research for grant funding opportunities. We'd like to improve our infrastructure, our safety infrastructure, and grant, grant monies is one way to do it. And so that's where we'll, we'll put some, you know, a good portion of our effort. One of the things that we did get accomplished, that I'd like to thank Mr. Warburton, I think he's already left for the evening, we did get installed four or three new barricades, pedestrian barricades, at the intersection of Mitchell Canyon and Four Oaks. The right-hand picture, the one on the far side there, is actually one of the original barricades, which was straightened and repaired and had the signs installed on it. And the other three that are pictured are new barricades. So the, the message is strong here. Eight signs, each one of, you know, so as you come up to the, to the intersection, you get two messages that are the same thing. You see it in front of you, you see it across the street. Hopefully, that will help enforce and good behavior on the, on the, on the behalf of pedestrians. So we did meet with Monte Diablo Elementary and with the middle school. One of the couple of things that the Monte Diablo Elementary have done, first, they've added a third crossing guard at Pine Hollow Road and Mount Zion to control that intersection. And that actually was funded by the parents that are at Monte Diablo Elementary. Lynn and I met with the principal, Lynn Kissinger, and vice principal, Joe Bruno, to, as I said, to, to discuss this before school started, so that we were in concert before the, the first day. And then, as I said, Lynn and Sergeant Shaw were onsite to observe the traffic and, and pedestrian movements on the first day of school. So I'd like to introduce Lynn and ask her if she'd come up and just kind of walk through some of the observations that she and Sergeant Shaw saw, and give her opinion. Lynn is a registered traffic engineer, so she's very well-versed in traffic and pedestrian movements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to commend the parents at both the middle school and the elementary school for a first day of school. I was amazed at how smoothly it went. You know, there were a few little glitches, but nothing, it was way better than I had anticipated. So the elementary school starts much earlier than the middle school, so I was out there first. I was at the corner of Pine Hollow and Mount Zion for most of the time, the parents were, and the kids were coming and going. So I didn't get a complete feel of what was happening out on Mitchell Canyon. So as soon as things settled down, maybe in a week or so, I plan on going out and doing another observation, and make sure that everything that we can do as a city is working as good as possibly could be expected. Some of my observations for the first day of school is that everybody I saw, every single student was escorted by a parent, or a neighbor, or somebody, an adult was with them. There were no kids on that first day that I saw going to school by themselves. I assume that will change a little bit, but everybody wanted to make sure their kids got to school safe, and they actually escorted them all the way to the classroom. And most of the parents parked in the neighborhood. There were some parents dropped in the pickup-drop-off area, but I think the number of cars that day was lower, because everybody was walking their kids to school. It wasn't a big disruption, but I can see that getting to be more and more problematic as less and less parents walk their children to school. The one thing that I saw that concerned me, and my kids went to Monte Diablo Elementary, so I noticed it back then too, is that the parents get to the crosswalk and just kind of drag their kids across the street. And the kids do not participate or learn anything about what they should be doing when they get there. And as the kids get older, you know, yes, you tell your kids to look both ways. This is a four-way stop. To say, are there any cars coming? The answer is always going to be yes, at that time of the morning, at that location. But to teach your kids about getting eye contact with the driver, and really figuring out what they should do and when they should be crossing. There was a little blurb in the Monte Diablo notice to the parents about that, and I think if they can beef that up, that would be one thing I want to recommend to them, because that is so important. You're not always going to be with your kids. You know, the most important thing to do as a parent is to teach your children how to make good decisions. And I think walking and being a pedestrian is a big part of that.
Was the print actually that small?
And actually, I tried to blow it up.
Angifying it, so I can see it.
Yes, you can go on the, there, there's a little bit in there about having your children, you know, being, you know, knowing when is the safe time to cross the street. But I think if they really make sure that the parents understand that this should be a, a learning situation. No, don't try to read it. It is on their website, though, so it was, it is available. So that was a major thing I noticed at Monte Diablo. When I left there, I did notice, you know, that the traffic out on Mitchell Canyon was a lot heavier and more congested than where I had been standing. And yes, there were a lot of parents dragging their smaller children across the street, where we have all our new barricades. And I think that's also something that the parents really need to understand, is that they are setting an example for those children, and that, you know, we've already had one collision there with a, a truck and a child, and we want to make sure that what we're teaching our children is what we want them to be doing when we're not around. After that, I went up to the middle school, and there were a number of things that I observed there. A couple of things that we can be doing, one, we can be doing now, because we, on the consent calendar, hired a concrete contractor, is that at the corner, would that be the southwest corner, the traffic signal pole with the button to push is not right adjacent to the curb ramp, so you kind of have to take a step in the dirt to get to the push button, which is not ADA compliant. And when we get winter, they're gonna be stepping in the mud. So if we can just get a little bit of concrete right there to make it so you can get to the pole easily, that would be very happy. Also, that particular ramp had, happened to have a plum tree, or several plum trees overhanging it, and we need to get the, the plums out. It was very messy on that day, and we've talked to Jim, I think he cleans that regularly, and the plum trees are just very messy. For anybody that drives out there on a regular basis with school, they probably know, if you're coming down Clayton Road, that you, if you're not going to the middle school, you should be in the right lane, because the left turn into the middle school backs up way, way, way past the turn pocket. One of the things I noticed, as I was watching the cars and come into the parking lot, is almost every single car had one student in it. And I think to improve the traffic flow around the middle school, getting the parents to carpool would do more for that than anything else that they did. Again, the parents were, like, 99.9% of them followed all the instructions, went through the thing. There was one car that was parked in the pickup-drop-off that kind of messed things up quite a bit, but out of all those parents, to have one car that stopped and wasn't just picking up and dropping off was pretty amazing. Another thing that I know the council has been interested in is the possibility of doing the scramble crossing at that intersection. And I think that would be something that could be done fairly easily. I know in the staff report, it says $50,000. That's a outside limit. I think we can probably do it for less. You know, I would need to go in and check wiring and, you know, really start pulling pullbox lids and stuff like that, to see, you know, what exactly is out there, and if we could do it for less money. I know Contra Costa County Signal Maintenance could probably do a good amount of the work. We're trying to. One of the things also is hiring, signing and striping contractors, that just when we have these little projects, can come out and do it, where you kind of make the crosswalks look different, so the kids know they can cross diagonally. And in doing that, that'll cut down the time that we need to have for the flashing "Don't Walk" and make that intersection work much more efficiently. So the other thing I noticed at the middle school is, relative to the number of children that were being dropped off by their parents, there were very few kids walking. Not to say there were none, but just percentage-wise, it was probably 20, 80. So, and those were generally my observations. I hope to go back in a week or two and see how things have settled out, and keep the conversation going with the principals, to see if there's anything they think that we can do that will help them out in getting the kids around smoothly and safely. We will see what we can do.
Thank you, Lynn, Madam Mayor. Just a couple more comments. As, as Lynn just mentioned, the, the work doesn't stop here. It's an ongoing effort to, to keep an eye on, on these traffic patterns, to, to look for opportunities to enhance safety. She mentioned that she had Sergeant Shaw with her during her day out there on the first day of school. The chief has issued a directive to all of his staff to, whenever possible, be visible around the, the school, specifically at the, the beginning and end of the day. Issuing warnings where appropriate, or citations when necessary. There was a note that a few parents were setting a bad example in crossing in places where they were not. So we need to curb that behavior, we need to continue to communicate with the, the school districts, to utilize their ability to communicate with those parents at, at every opportunity, to, to make the community safer for not only their children, but for, for everyone. And then lastly, we're gonna be aggressive in looking for grant money. I come from a place where we were very good at finding grant money through Safe Routes to Schools and, and other measures, to find, to find ways to get some of these improvements made as, as soon as possible in, in our community. So with that, I'll hand it back to, to the council. Again, this is really an ongoing effort, so I, I consider this something that we can report out to you on a semi-regular basis.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm sure some of my colleagues have some questions. And like you said, the purpose of today's discussion really was to get some additional information, so that we as a city can see if there's anything else we can do. But as you mentioned, it is really a collaborative effort between all of us, including the parents and the schools. But I had one question. So first of all, I really appreciate some of the information we have here, sort of in the Q and A format, on the various types of things we could do, and some of them are very inexpensive and sort of easily accomplished, some of them are a little bit more costlier, and, and if we're pursuing grant monies, I think that's great. One of the things, I've had some citizens who talked to me about one other idea that's not here. So maybe, maybe three, four months ago, the city of Concord installed these stop signs that flash when you approach them, and they have them right there on Pine Hollow, near the Pine Hollow Middle School and the elementary school. And I'm wondering, it looks like it's solar-powered, so, you know, it looks like it doesn't need electricity right there. Any idea how much those cost?
I would guess they're in the neighborhood of the RRFBs, which I think is, you know, $20,000 to get the solar panels.
I think we're talking about something a little bit different. I, I would be happy to, to get a more exact number, because if it's as simple as what I think it might be, we, we might be able to find something that, that we can get done.
Yeah, so it would need the solar panel, and then something that sees you coming, you know, like a video camera kind of thing, that would add to the expense. You know, the LED lights are not.
I don't even know if this one has, so I mean, literally, is it regular?
No, it's motion-activated. It's motion-activated, it's awesome.
And it's speed-sensitive, too.
It's awesome. It changes pattern in flashing as you drive.
So, so Google's great. We, we've got some numbers in front of us that, that are much more manageable, so let us explore it more, in more detail, but it's possible that we may be able to get something done in a, in a much more affordable fashion. But we'll, we'll look at other options as well. There, there's many ways to, to draw folks' attention to some of those critical intersections.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Go ahead.
Although I've lived here for 40 years, the community I came from beforehand had a similar problem back then. And I think what the city managers alluding to, stop signs were actually like three to four times larger than the ones that we currently have, and they're not very expensive. And believe me, when you put something like that, it gets people's attention when it, without having flashing lights and all sorts of other things like that. But it's less costly, but very, very, very doable and workable. First of all, I want to comment, and I want to say, I congratulate the, the parents from the elementary schools for contributing to the, to the funding for the crossing guard. This has to be a three-way partnership with the city, the, the school district, and of course, the, the parents. And so that, that's very encouraging to see that. Can you allu, enlarge a little bit on it for me? Maybe I missed it. At the middle school, pedestrian cross phase, what is that?
Where the signal would have a time when...
So it's phasing of the traffic signals?
Everybody would get a red light, all the walklights would come on, the kids could go diagonally across the street. Everybody would have a no right turn on red sign during that time. So the kids could cross diagonally, or, you know, whatever they needed to do as efficiently as possible.
Okay. Any questions?
You just doing questions?
Yeah, just questions. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we explore what would be involved in making Mitchell Canyon northbound at Four Oaks a no right turn into that court? Because I think when we're talking about parents crossing, or students crossing, what I've seen when I drive by is that because of the traffic, people will turn right into Four Oaks, park, and then do the drop-off. So if we prohibit right turns into Four Oaks, I think it would alleviate a lot of that. There is a walkway at the end of Four Oaks, so that pedestrians can walk straight through, but as far as parents bringing kids and whatnot, I think, I, I see quite a few people parking there in the mornings to, to do drop-off, essentially. And we, we do make a no-left turn on the Four Oaks when you're heading northbound, but on the right, you're, you're able to...
When you're heading southbound.
Am I in the wrong direction?
When you're heading toward the mountain, southbound, it's a no-left turn.
My mistake, southbound.
We got that comment from you. We haven't had a chance to really sit down and look at how big the problem is, and what that would accomplish and stuff, but that is definitely on our to-do list, so we will be looking at that.
Okay. And then we approved the, the as-needed striping and painting, and with the four barricades, can we like paint that intersection as well? Or is that just, is that overkill? That could be overkill, but...
We'll, we'll continue to explore options to make it, make it as safe as possible, and, and you've got quite a bit of traffic engineering experience standing in front of you. We'll, we'll explore every possibility.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the things that I think would be very beneficial to the city is also, instead of just saying, oh, we have this one spot, let's do this, is to kind of set a policy so that you don't open yourself for liability, and that you do this grandiose thing here, a child gets hit over here and you get sued, why didn't you do it at my intersection? So if you set a policy, if you have X number of kids, or X number of cars, or the speed is such and such, or if it's within some distance to the school, but set a policy, and then we can look at all the intersections that meet that criteria. and then we can look at all the intersections that meet that criteria, and then we're not in a liability situation.
Sounds great.
Great, thank you. So let me open up a public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please step up.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I did request a couple of years ago, right after my daughter and I were almost killed in that intersection going to Diablo View Middle School, that a sign be put up coming from Oakhurst on Clayton Road towards the middle school. There's a turn, and people speeding don't see the light until it's too late. And if you could put a sign up that says, like they have on Ignacio Valley, caution red light, prepare to stop. My daughter and I were this far in the crosswalk with a walk sign. That car was that far away from us. I cried when I got across the street because if I hadn't pushed my daughter aside, it would have been a whole nother night, and we were on our way to open house. And I would really, and it's, I live on Marsh Creek Circle, and I hear and I see tire screeching, and I've seen horrible accidents. And you need something there that says caution red light because you can't see it until you come around the turn. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Please step up if you'd like to speak.
So my name's Glenn Miller, 1005 Pebble Beach Drive. I've been going to the elementary school for, it'll now be my 13th year, twice a week. So in regards to the elementary school, actually, I think you've been doing a pretty good job. I applaud your improvements. I wish you could do something to ban the quarry trucks, but it's probably not a feasible thing to do. But that would really make it a lot safer. I mean, just to delay them coming, not only turning onto Mitchell Canyon, but then that stop sign up there. I don't think you can probably feasibly do that with your agreement with the quarry. But if you could kind of explore that, that might be a good thing. As far as the middle school is concerned, I think everybody gets the sense of what the drill is in terms of stop signs and those kind of, and the activities. It's the complacency that really, as you move through the school year, it seems to me that the people that drop people off are just getting complacent. They're not paying attention. And one of the things that they are doing, which is very common these days, is they are on their cell phones. So if there is some way that you could create a zone, I mean, you have to deal with the police department, I understand that, put some kind of fear god into these people that get away from the school before you look at your cellphone. It would really be helpful. I've, you know, I go there at what's called altogether time, and that means that the kindergartens are, some kindergartens are coming and some kindergartens are going, and there's drop offs. And these are the little kids, too. So you've got the little kids, and they don't pay a lot of attention. And you've got these parents that as soon as they've dropped off their kids, the first thing they do is they pull out this, they look at this, and they're still driving their car. And I don't know, I don't know how you deal with it, but it's, if there's some way that you can, you know, have the school send out a directive, or you could have the officers, you know, try to do a little bit more enforcement, I think that would really be happen. I've only, I've watched kids almost been hit. I've almost been hit. The other thing is, if you could take a look at the sensitivity of the crossing buttons at the regency crossing, there's a lot of people that come across that regency crossing, and that's a pretty decent speed that those folks come down Clayton Road in either direction. And it takes a while. And I've been sensitized to be frustrated and want to try to cross without the signal. It takes a real long time. You might want to just take a look at the sensitivity of that crossing button so that the kids that are coming, especially during those hours, have the opportunity to cross. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Go ahead, come on up.
Hi, my name's Laney King, and I spoke at the last meeting. My son was hit last year at the Four Oaks and Mitchell Canyon intersection. So I just wanted to say thank you. I think the no pedestrian crossing signs, the four of them are very visible, so I'm curious to see how that will work. But I have been in regular communication with Lynn, the crossing guard at Mitchell Canyon and Pine Hollow. And so she did say to me, I mean, we're on day three of school, and she said, it's mainly parents that she sees crossing, not parents with kids as much, but especially parents after they've dropped off their kids that are running across that same intersection. So it's happening already. She feels like, and I agree, that if people are ticketed really heavily, that would help discourage that behavior. I also agree with Jeff's comment that there should be no right turns because if you can't park on Four Oaks, then you really, unless you're walking all the way from your house and crossing in that intersection, you're not parking and then running across because you're late, which is why most people run across there. So, you know, I do think the more kids see that behavior, the more they're going to think it's okay to cross there. And I just wanted to bring up that I was talking with the crossing guard a block up, and that is happening still. And then I also just wanted to, as a parent, say that yes, that communication did go out just about be aware, you know, when you're crossing the street kind of thing. But in the document that I provided at the last meeting, that was very long and hard for laypeople to understand, it did talk about having a traffic safety plan. And I just came from our PFC meeting and not, we noticed on the website that not even our drop off procedure was accurate on our website. And we don't have a traffic safety plan in place yet, which is, you know, what are the safe routes for kids coming from different directions to get to school? So I would just like to see that eventually be put in place and communicated to the parents. I think that would be great. And blinking stop signs, like on Pine Hollow, also would be excellent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none more close, public comment and bringing up to the council. So this is actually not an action item before us today. This was really more of an informational report. And let me just mention a couple of words first. I mean, I definitely look forward to sort of continuing this dialogue. So if we can keep doing some of the research as our time permits and bring it back to further discussion and keep working with the school and parents, I think that would be excellent. So I do like a lot of the things that are here. So like I said, if we can find grant monies to do to some of these things, I think that would be great. If we can do some of the items that are not very costly, I think that would be excellent as well. I would love to know a little bit more about that blinking stop sign. And then for me, I do remember when my now 16-year-old started at the elementary school, the police was definitely much more present there, and I may have gotten one ticket once too, that I'm ashamed to admit. But I do think it's helpful to just have the police presence. And I know they have other priorities as well, but to the extent they can be present, I think that is helpful for sure. So with that, any other comments? Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah. Living four houses away from the elementary school, I am very familiar with the behavior in the neighborhood. And I do just want to note for the record that the quarry pays for the crossing guard at Mitchell Canyon and Pine Hollow. They have done that for years. And they do that, we administer the contract, but they pay for that crossing guard, which is really good. They start at 7:00 AM, so I think it would be an economic hardship for them to change their hours. But they try really hard to be careful. The flashing stop signs at the corner of Pennsylvania and Pine Hollow are awesome. And the reason, not only would they be great during school time, just to wake people up a little bit, but they'd really be good 24/7 because we don't have streetlights in that neighborhood at all. And so it's really, really dark, especially in the winter when it's raining. And so there are a lot of people, because the trees tend to get a little overgrown, and I wish Jim was here. It's one of those things, approaching in the southbound direction, approaching Pine Hollow on Mitchell Canyon, the trees on that right side hang down over that stop sign right where it is you need to start stopping. So it's a sight distance thing, and boy, they're pruned, and three months later, they got to be cut again. And I've gone out with my loppers once, but I'm too short to reach anything, so I do the best I can. So those would be awesome at both of the intersections, actually, on Pine Hollow. Another thing, and I'm sure that our city manager is aware, and I suspect that Ms. Filson is as well, the TransPAC Traffic Demand Management Program is very robust. We have carpool matching programs that we can do for the schools. We have a Street Smarts Educational Program that we can present on traffic safety and other programs, how to be a safe pedestrian, how to ride your bicycle safely. They actually have a walking school bus program that they've put together for some neighborhoods so that a parent or two at the far end of the neighborhood will walk the kids to school and pick up all the ones along the way. So that not every parent has to do it all the time. It can be incredibly effective if you've got some parents who are interested in doing that. And I know at least from the local neighborhood around there, a lot of those folks are available during the day. And all it needs is some organization, and the TransPAC staff would be happy to do that. They also are really good at finding grant funds. We have gotten some grant funds from them before to put in bike racks, both at Mount Diablo and at Diablo View. And so things like that might be something helpful. They might be able to help with the cost of the flashing stop signs, too. That's a possibility. I haven't asked about that one specifically, but we certainly can. The other thing I'd like to look at, and staff can do this going forward, the pathway along Mitchell Canyon, particularly between Clayton Road and Pine Hollow, is really just sort of an edge-of-the-road path. It's not, and I know we don't have a lot of funds for those kinds of things, but hopefully we will have additional funds through other sources coming forward, and maybe there's something we can do to improve that in our right of way so there's actually a more formal pathway that doesn't turn to mud in the winter. And the other thing I mentioned to the city manager last week was, this is not just a pedestrian issue. This is a driver safety issue. And Doug, I've almost been hit a couple of times because the people in the queue get impatient and decide to jump the queue and go in the opposite direction lane where there is no parking on the side. There is no shoulder. And if someone's going the correct direction of traffic, I am shocked there has not been a head-on collision or a traffic accident with someone being hurt. And, you know, people get impatient because they want to drop that kid at kindergarten, and they think, okay, I'll jump the weight and go and turn left around everybody, or go up to the neighborhood to park. Either way, they're still jumping half a block of traffic, and it's just not safe. And I'd like to see some tickets written, very visible tickets written, to dissuade that kind of behavior because it happens in the morning, it happens even more, I think, in the afternoon. And it's really scary. So I think there's got to be some examples made of some folks who are giving very poor examples to our children.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember one.
I too like the blinker stop signs. I think they're awesome.
They are. They're so cool.
Anywhere where there's frequent pedestrians and there's a stop sign controlled intersection, I think is a good candidate. So to the extent that you have information, that'd be great. I did have a chance to talk with Principal Bannister, who is at the middle school, and she is very enthusiastic about the pedestrian scramble at that intersection. So to the extent that that is available to us, either via grant funding or if we're able to make that happen with existing funding just at a lower cost. I know that a lot of the things cost a lot of money, so grants are awesome. But even if we can't do grants for whatever reason, I think it's a worthwhile conversation to have to, after, if we exhaust that avenue, it's a worthwhile conversation to have to see if that's something that is, and it's something that we want to devote resources to. Because I do think that a number of these things would be really valuable. And so, yes, that scramble would be great. That's it. Thanks.
Perfect. Perfect. So as I said, it was just an informational item, but I think we all look forward to kind of keeping this on the burner and having it come back. So thank you, staff, for all the work on that report. So let's move on to our last item, which is item 8C, which is the discussion and consideration of the formation of a land use subcommittee. And I believe we do have a report from Mrs. Sobranti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this item considers that formation. And in an effort to provide council some information about what a land use subcommittee is, it's appropriate for me to just give you a little bit of background. So first, like other subcommittees, the land use subcommittee would include two council members, so it does not constitute a quorum of the council, and they would not be responsible for making any decisions on their own. It would just be a sampling of preliminary opinions or feedback that they would be providing. However, because this subcommittee would also include two planning commissioners, it does trigger the need for public noticing of any meetings that are held. Just want to put that on the record. Also, similar to the city council, because it's only two members of the planning commission, again, it wouldn't constitute a quorum. And what we're, again, really looking for is just feedback from this committee when meetings are held. So once formed, when and how would this subcommittee be utilized? So let me start by saying the subcommittee would not be used for projects that are considered routine or projects that are going through a ministerial process. For example, if there was an applicant for a routine use permit or a home addition, those would not ever go to a land use subcommittee. Those would just go through the normal process. All routine and ministerial projects would just be directed through the normal process. They wouldn't be affected whatsoever. But for a development where the use of, let me say, for a development where the use of the subcommittee would consider something that was discretionary, that's where we would use the land use subcommittee. It could be used, for example, for rezoning of a property. That's a discretionary action. Or it could be used for a development that maybe needed an exception or a variance. You would take those projects forward to this group to get some feedback to see if it's viable to even continue with the project. In my experience, several times, projects would come forward, they'd get some feedback, they would go away permanently. The big benefit there would be, it would save staff the time of writing reports, doing presentations, going before a planning commission, only to have the applicant just turn around and walk away after they finally got some actual feedback. So the big advantage of this type of a subcommittee is that, again, we have a very short staff. And when we're trying to get a lot of work done, we need to find ways to be more efficient. There's some policies that this council has wanted to explore. One that comes to mind is in relation to accessory dwelling units. This would be a great opportunity to explore getting some feedback from a staff level of the subcommittee to just get a start on where perhaps we might start in terms of a direction. After that, it would come to the full council before any policy would be set in stone. The subcommittee doesn't make decisions. It really is just put in place in an effort to allow staff to be more efficient. So I think I've said what I needed to say. I'm happy to answer any questions. My experience with this over the past many years has been that it has been a helpful tool that we put in our toolbox and bring out to make things work a little bit more quickly, a little bit more efficiently.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Does the subcommittee help, in your experience, if a project has been going a long time with the city, that's come to loggerheads?
So a couple of things about that. First, I would like to say that you don't go back First, I would like to say that you don't go back and forth to a subcommittee. You go one time, you get the feedback, and then you take it through the regular process. Nobody ever skips the planning commission or skips a city council. So if you have a project that has never been through a subcommittee, it might be an opportunity or a tool that could be utilized to work out some concerns and get to a point where a project would have a better idea of what it's going to take to actually make it through the process.
Okay. Any other questions, staff?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So currently, there's, I was just thinking about this with the meetings, there's currently legislation that purports to limit the number of meetings that proposed development would be allowed to have. Would this trigger that clock or that tide, or what do you call it, toll, that one of those required meetings? Like, I think I read, there's so many bills, but there's one of them that said that, you know, you can have no more than three or four or five, whichever bill, three or four or five meetings, and that's all that the city could require. So would this trigger one of those? If, I'm not sure. It's an agendized meeting that's open for public comment, so I'm just thinking that it may. I don't know.
Well, let me add one thing that I left out. This is not a requirement for any developer. If a developer comes forward and says, you know, I think this might be a helpful tool for me because I don't want to waste my time, I want to get some early feedback, they have that option. If they want to go through the standard process, through the planning commission, whatever the regular process is, they can always choose to go that way. It's absolutely optional. Again, in my experience, which, where I came from, we used this for about the last eight, nine years, many projects chose to jump towards this opportunity because they knew that it would at least get their project some early guidance and give them a feel whether they were just wasting their time or if the project had the potential of actually coming to fruition.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that's voluntary. I guess my question was more along the lines of, a lot of the purpose behind these bills is so that developers could have meetings early and upfront, so they would obviously take the opportunity and engage in this voluntary discussion, and then it would toll the number of meetings, and so therefore, they would be, they would not be able to be forced to have additional meetings in the future. So if you have a long project, you have all your meetings upfront, and then no more.
If I might add to this, I think because it is voluntary, we could make it clear, and they could sign something indicating, should any of those laws go into effect, that this wouldn't count towards those three mandatory meetings.
But it also refers to public hearing meetings.
And this is not a public hearing.
It's not referring to regular meetings. It's public hearings is what's limited, not the regular meetings.
Okay.
So it wouldn't count.
Okay. I mean, that's just a concern, I guess. Could you walk through what the actual current process is for a developer, and then contrast that with what is being proposed, just to show, like, what the differences would be?
Sure.
If they elect to.
Right. Absolutely. It's voluntary if they choose to go that way. Again, depending upon the type of project, it's going to be very different. But if, for example, you were looking at a small subdivision, that process would normally come in, work with staff, create an application, go through some staff conversations, eventually end up before a planning commission. Depending on the project, there may be some steps that happen after that. This would essentially do exactly the same thing with one additional meeting, usually on the front end, that allows them to gather some information early on to help streamline their process. That's the only thing it does. No matter what the process, it's really one additional meeting early on with, almost always, a minimal amount of preparation on staff's part. It's an opportunity for someone to come in, roll out their concept. I think I may have shared this with some of the council members in our individual meetings, but I'll share it for the audience. The example that I used was, a couple of years ago, we had a developer come in who wanted to change the zoning on a piece of property that that developer was considering buying. They wanted to put a car wash in, and they wanted to get a feel for whether or not, how that project would be received from the decision-makers. They presented their ideas. It was given some consideration by those folks, and they raised concerns about the proximity to other car washes in the area and if that was perhaps the best use of the land. After that meeting, staff had maybe put in just an hour or two in preparation, the developer had put in an hour or two in preparation, they chose not to apply because they kind of got the feeling that, yeah, maybe this isn't the best use of this land, maybe this isn't the best opportunity for us, let's explore other opportunities elsewhere. It saves staff a ton of time, it saved the developer a ton of money, and they were wise, in that particular case, in my opinion, to choose that opportunity to get to the end result of, now we know where we're going, let's find another opportunity. And they did so, and they moved on to another area.
So to elaborate a little bit on that, so typically, when a project gets to the planning commission stage, it will have had to complete its SEQA, which can be a year, two years sometimes.
Depending upon the project, the SEQA process can be daunting.
Right.
But in this case, it was a relatively small one.
Right.
Other cases, it can be a lot of work and be very expensive, as you mentioned.
Right. But so what I think you're proposing here in the land use committee, because it's not making any decisions, you do not have to have completed SEQA, so you could really have it early on as a feedback mechanism.
Absolutely. If somebody wanted to take a piece of property that was zoned for mixed use and presented as a what-if, I did a commercial project here as opposed to mixed use, because mixed use has a difficult time, in my experience, penciling out. So someone may want to come and say, would the decision-makers be open to that idea? You could have that conversation and just get some feedback and decide whether or not you wanted to explore potentially purchasing property or not.
Go ahead, Councilmember One.
So wouldn't that tend to go the other way, then, as far as giving false hope to someone? I mean, because you have two members of the council, two members of the planning commission, and there's still, you know, three other votes, so.
That information is very much made very clear to them. No decisions are being made. This is our initial thoughts. No, no, in fact, you may come to me later, and when I see the full project, I may not like it. Right now, I kind of like what I see, and here's the things that I like about it. Those are the kind of responses that they get. Nothing is in stone, but if they get some heavy concerns, it also sends a message, and they're allowed to make those decisions on their own. Trust me, I had this conversation with the city attorney, and there was some skepticism there for good reason, and that is something that every developer that would come before us, it would be made very clear to them. And in many cases, it's staff that's coming before that group to gather information so that we can put policies in front of you more efficiently and more quickly.
Okay.
So, sorry. Just to kind of go back to the example, I just, working through a hypothetical, I think, helps me contextualize. So if you're talking about, you said a subdivision, but if we, you said that they would then go to the planning commission, the next step is going to the council? Do we, I haven't seen one of these before, so, because, you know.
The answer is not always. In fact, most of the time, not. If they're simple projects, they go through a process that is completed at the planning commission.
So simple, smaller-scale projects end at the planning commission, larger projects, then can you give that, can you walk through that example?
It depends on the project, but oftentimes, larger projects can also end at the planning commission level. Now, if there is an appeal, that appeal brings that project to the council, and it could be because the developer appeals the planning commission decision because he or she didn't like what they had to say, or it could be because a resident, maybe a neighbor, didn't like the result. It can get appealed to the planning, excuse me, to the city council. You are the final decision on that.
Or if a project needs rezoning, for example, so then I think all the rezoning happens at the city council level.
Correct.
Change of land use.
So appeals all to the council, change of land use all to the council.
And I don't think this is going to be a comprehensive list tonight. We could try to work one up for you. But again, this process wouldn't change that official process. All this does is put one meeting at the front end in an effort to streamline things.
Okay.
Are there any other major categories that always come? I'm just curious. I know that you just said that this isn't a comprehensive list.
I think we can try to put something together and put it forward to the entire council and make it a public document if anybody wants to see it. But there may actually be something online. I'm sure that the city attorney could help us with that.
Okay.
I think it's for, if you look up our codes, if you look at any conditional use permit, rezonings, any of those applications, it will mention there whether the planning commission is the deciding body or whether they're a recommending body.
Right.
So it should all be there. It just needs to be pulled. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we were talking just a minute ago, and I was trying to pull up the definition to help clarify. A lot of the legislation that is being proposed talks about limiting the number of de novo hearings, and maybe either our city attorney or our resident land use attorney could define what a de novo hearing actually is, because that's the term that is being limited in some of the land use and housing bills that are being proposed.
Typically, when we talked about the appeal process, if, let's say, the planning commission denied a project and it was appealed by the applicant, it would come to the city council, and it's typically a de novo hearing, which is you hear it anew, which is you start from the very beginning and hear the entirety of the project. If the applicant didn't like a certain condition, as the interim city manager mentioned, you wouldn't just look at the certain condition, you would look at the full project. And so, obviously, that would create additional time, and I'm guessing that's what the legislature is concerned about.
So continued meetings on the same issue, building one on the other, would not be considered de novo hearings independently?
No.
They would be one de novo hearing held at different times as a continuation of the hearing, correct? Of the hearing, of the process?
Well, I think if they're trying to put limitations on the number, then they may...
Of de novo hearings.
Yeah, they may see it as each continuation being, adding to the number.
Because I was told that this basically means public hearings for major decisions.
I suspect, and I can double-check if there's certain legislation...
That would be helpful.
...you're considering, that I suspect what they're looking to get at is these multiple continuances where, you know, months may be going by while the council or planning commission is hearing the matter.
Right.
Okay. Let me open up a public comment. I do have a couple speaker cards. Brian Boudel.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I actually, a lot of my concerns were alleviated by Mr. Sobranti's explanation. There are a few that I still have, though, and I think one is already on your guys' radar, this possibility of triggering the limit of hearing, so I don't think I need to say anything more on that. I think Ms. Pierce has brought that up, and it'll be dealt with. Another concern I have, though, is the notice that would be given, because this is something new. We know when the planning commission meetings are, we know when the city council meetings are. It sounds like this type of hearing, though, is going to be something that's not going to happen on a regular or even frequent basis. So my concern is how the notice would be communicated. I mean, is it going to be posted on the website? Are we going to, you know, put a thing on a tree? Without some kind of regularly scheduled thing, I think there's going to be a potential problem for getting it out to the people, to the citizens, so that they can attend this, to be part of it and watch it. So I think maybe setting a regular schedule for it, that it's going to be, you know, I don't know, once every two months? I mean, I guess it kind of depends on how often these things are going to come up before that kind of schedule could be set. But some kind of regularity, so it could be predictable and attended. And then, of course, obviously, I think the staffing of this subcommittee is important. I think it has to be particularly mindful of potential conflicts of interest that are involved, because I do think there are some that fall in potentially both the planning commission and city council members that might interfere with this, but that's maybe diminished somewhat because this is not a determinative hearing. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Miller.
So Brian danced around what my concern is, and that my concern is the implicit bias in this type of arrangement. Nobody has talked about the candidates that would serve on this. I understand that they would come from the field of the city council and the planning commission, but we also know that certain city council members and the planning commission folks that serve and are proposed and are appointed by certain city council members have a certain bias, and also, some here have a certain conflict of interest. So unless the criteria for those that were eligible to serve, in other words, there would be some kind of a cross-section in the criteria for the four candidates, I see this just becomes one of those situations where, you know, we've got two votes, and all we need is to convince the third, and the people get screwed. So, and I think that, I understand you're probably not going to be making any decision tonight, but I would like to see you come back with a certain kind of criteria. For example, if Mr. Wolf and Mr. Juan had been on the selection committee for the planning commission people, and those were the new candidates, and they were also going to be serving on the, as the council representatives, it probably wouldn't be appropriate for those planning commission people to serve on it. I mean, that's just kind of an example, because there is kind of an implied bias. You know, we understand how the politics of things work here in this town. It's been going on for a long time. I've seen good folk be kicked off of the planning commission and other folks be applauded for what I think is not very good conduct. So I just like to see, if you're going to proceed with this, that you at least come up with some kind of a criteria on how these four people are going to be selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't have any speaker cards. Please come up. Can you state your name also for the record when you get to the mic?
Roy Correa.
It's Roy Correa?
Yeah, Roy Correa.
With a C?
Yeah. Excuse me?
Sorry, we were just saying, what's your name? We didn't hear you.
Oh, okay. That's all right. I can, you know, a lot was said here, right? What you just described in here regarding the, you know, I just wrote down three things. Council, you know, kind of hierarchical, council, planning commission, and then a planning subcommittee. And, you know, a lot of words are spent, and Jeff had a number of questions, and I think maybe one or two of you had other questions. And I don't think people are getting it. I don't get it, okay? And I'd like to see, you know, a definition from you, right? A legal definition. It can be economic, you can summarize it in terms of the process. You know, the players. There's the council, there's players on the council, there are players on the planning commission, I don't know who those people are, and there are players in the subcommittee. You know, what's membership there? I don't know. You know, and so if you back it up, you know, there's a lot of detail here, or that we're missing, and I think a simple economic definition regarding process, policy, membership, membership criteria, who are they, and, you know, what are the deliverables for each one of these areas here? And I think that's critically important for all of us to understand. And I was just thinking about this, right? And I kept, I was thinking about the, if you have a number of, you know, parties out there who want to do something with property here, you know, here in, I was going to say Danville, and here in Clayton, there's a lot of stuff going on there. You know, what's the criteria? What's the feud? What's the timeframe to submit? What's the timeframe for people to respond? All of those kind of details. I don't, you know, I personally don't need all that detail, but I certainly would like to know the process. And if you could do that, very helpful, because a lot of words were spent here, and I don't think people get it. I don't think some of you didn't get it either, okay? And I'd like to know. We need to know. You know, let's make it transparent, simple. I get it, I understand it, and I'm glad that the council is looking out for their best interests. We don't want simply anybody to come in this town and build and do whatever they want. But, you know, what are the checks and balances in this process? How... How are people engaged in the process? So it becomes a, you know, let sunshine hit it, so it's clear to all.
Thank you.
Can you do that? I hope so.
Was there someone else? Go ahead. Can you speak to the mic, please, Jim?
Would one of the functions of the subcommittee be recruiting? Could possibly entail recruiting a developer or an interest to come into the town to build in any neighborhood or lot or location?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the councils. I think the decision in front of us is whether or not to form a land use subcommittee. Ms. May Pierce?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a great idea, and I do not want to serve on it.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a few.
Ms. May Juan?
On the staff, where I was just noticing that, oh, sorry, it describes some of the benefits, but there's no section that talks about cost or risks. So to me, anytime we have a document that says, here's something, here's a proposal, here's the good stuff, I'd also like to see an assessment of what the bad stuff is, too, just for completeness. When I was thinking about it, I did have a conversation with our city manager, and some of the concerns that I just, that I had that weren't, that we hadn't yet discussed was, if we move in this direction, I do think that it introduces some element of risk. So, for example, if a city, if one of us or one of the planning commission members say something that they shouldn't, like how they'd be voting or something like that, then it provides this opportunity for, you know, for these members to signal in ways that really isn't in the spirit of how we're supposed to have these open meetings. And so, you know, I think one of the examples that you gave earlier was, you know, would you be open to? And I don't know if that, you know, I think that kind of skirts a little bit of what would be rebuttal or what isn't. And I know it is, I would consider it kind of not in the spirit of what is trying to be prevented from those conversations with, you know, agreements with, that are held outside of, you know, the larger meeting context. And so, you know, if, you know, if this subcommittee, if they've already viewed projects and provided input directly to developers, I think that I would question whether it can be said, whether or not that they're truly neutral when it comes back to the full decision-making body. So that's the, the risk aspect is one element of something that I was concerned about. Second, as Councilman Wolf mentioned, you know, this false sense of assurance about if what is communicated at the preliminary stage is different than at the end of the process. I know that we'd be very clear on, hey, this is information only, but I do think that when you have that opportunity for something different from the beginning to the end, then you can create this friction that would not otherwise have existed. And then, you know, regarding transparency of process, you know, I think, you know, in line with what we've had, the previous discussion about minutes, with the informableness of these meetings, you know, they're going to be noticed, I think, and I think, I don't think that there's going to, there's not going to be video, the minutes will be very light, they'll be public and noticed, however, it would be, it would be a challenge for folks to stay abreast of what the committee's doing. So to me, that, it isn't the most transparent thing. But I guess my understanding is that this type of thing, this communication or this discussion with developers is typically what happens with the planning commission. And so, you know, we have five members of the planning commission, most of their meetings are canceled as is, and, you know, they come from a background that has a lot of expertise. I know there's two of them here, they have expertise in a lot of these matters, and that's why we appoint them. I think that really does seem to be their purpose, and so, and the appropriate venue. I think, I'm not sure what is expected to be gained when we don't have the planning commission meetings, but then we have this ad hoc meeting as it is, whereas these are, you know, you'd expect these to already be happening with the planning commission. And I guess lastly, I would just say that, you know, in the, in the materials, it describes one of the purposes is to expedite projects. Is that what we want to do, to expedite and accelerate projects? You know, I think, as Councilman Diaz is very, is totally fine with the city having a reputation as rigorous law enforcement, and, you know, we have, we project that image to the community so that, you know, we encourage a certain type of behavior, you know, I'm kind of fine with the city having a reputation for rigorous land use approval process. And so, I'm not sure if you, if you ask yourself, do you want to expedite projects? So that, to me, is the stated goal of the group. I mean, granted, if we do form it, I'd be interested in serving, but.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think this is a very good idea. I'm not, I don't see it conflicting with the, has been restated here at least several times, the official process of a developer going directly to the planning department, to the planning commission, and ultimately, the city council, if that's what it takes. So it doesn't interrupt that at all.
Parallel.
I mean, you perceive that?
No, no, I agree. I agree with you. I don't think it interrupts that process. They run in parallel.
Okay. Anyway, so I think it's a fine idea to, as you, has been suggested, that a potential developer might use it as basically testing the waters and see what their reaction is on an initial basis, and I decline to be a member of it as well.
Okay, well, the, I agree that this is a primary role of the planning commission. I mean, being on the planning commission, and you're right, we did cancel a lot of meetings, it would be nice to have had a lot more things before us, but that being said, having things before us is not something we have much of right now. And I guess the question would remain, then, how important is it for us to have this type of committee? If we don't have a lot of development, are we in a rush to get this done now and get a committee formed? Or are we going to take some of the suggestions we heard here and maybe take a step back and put some parameters in place and find out exactly what this entails and then vote on who should serve on it? I certainly would like to serve on a committee like this as well. I mean, I'd like to get into the vision of this community and find out where we want to take certain projects and things. But is this something that we have to do right now? Or is it something we can take a step back at and form some real parameters here and decide if this is something a small town like Clayton really needs?
Before I go to my comments, let me have the city manager respond maybe a few things.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There were several questions. I want to take a shot at just alleviating some of those concerns. I heard a question about noticing come from the public comment. There would be multiple ways of noticing online as well as the posting that we do, but the other way of noticing is, my familiarity is you keep an email list of interested parties, and you email them the agenda every time you have a meeting. So that way, no one ever misses it, they are always aware, because more often than not, you do have to schedule these meetings around people's schedules, and it's not just a standing meeting, this would be an as-needed type of thing. I heard a concern raised about this being a way that folks would be meeting with a developer, and would that somehow make their future vote inappropriate, because they've already had some preliminary information? Developers can meet with planning commissioners on a one-on-one basis anytime that they can arrange that meeting. That can happen, could be happening now off-site. We don't know if that's happening. The difference here is, this is going to be a noticed public meeting in front of multiple people, and folks, my experience, behave very well, because they're in front of several folks keeping notes, and they know exactly what the rules are. So when we talk about meetings with developers, those do happen, sometimes inappropriately in other cities, and I don't think that's happening here, but I think that is always a possibility. As far as the cost goes, my experience, again, this is a cost-saving measure. This is not going to cost more staff time, it's going to cost less. It may take a little bit more time for the council members and the planning commissioners, which are, for all intents and purposes, volunteers, but from the standpoint of the staff, the net is usually a savings. I could read my own writing here. The term expedite, when you're talking about bringing something before council that might be setting a policy that you all want to put in place, and it goes back and forth three, four, five, six times, and I'm not saying that's happened, but it can, I've seen it, this could expedite that by getting to the conclusion more quickly. Not necessarily just a development. In a developer's case, this may expedite them going away, because they no longer are interested in doing a development. I'm not saying it necessarily gets the project built faster, it gets them to a conclusion, good or bad, faster. So I just want to put that on the record, because I know there were several concerns. We're not trying to expedite projects that perhaps are going to be unwanted by large numbers of the community. This is just to make the process more streamlined, because if we're going to go through it anyway, we don't need to be spending more staff time than necessary, more meetings than necessary. So with that, I'll stop.
Okay. So let me add a couple things, too, and I know, I think there's some other comments, too. So I think everybody knows, for a living, I'm a land use attorney, so I've done this for more than 15 years. I go to council meetings and planning commission meetings regularly. I have a hearing on a project this Thursday at the planning commission in San Francisco, where we've been continued three times already. It's the project that's been in the process for about three years, and the difficulty is that you have to go through CEQA, you have to get your project processed, but you have no idea what the planning commissioners want until you get there, and then you're a couple years into it, and tons of money and all that stuff. So, you know, when I first read about this proposal, I think I was a little bit hesitant for a few reasons, but, you know, in part, because I do think that it is the full council or the full planning commission that needs to make the decisions. But, you know, when I digested a little bit more, the purpose of this is not to make any decisions. It really is early feedback, and I do see some of the benefits in, to developers, to kind of see, test the water, so to speak, to see, you know, if it's sort of an absolute no-go, or if it might be supported, that type of thing. But again, I think the people who are on that committee need to be very careful that they're not making decisions, they really are just providing initial feedback on what's in front of them right now. And I would bet that whatever is presented to that land use committee is not the same project that ends up getting processed and reviewed, and it's probably a different project, maybe because of some of that feedback. And I think that the difficulty with normal processes is that, because you have to go through CEQA before you can get to a planning commission level, the planning commission comes several years often after you initially start penciling out a project. So I think that does make it difficult. So, and like you mentioned, developers could certainly meet with any planning commissioner or city council member one-on-one anytime, and nobody knows about that. So I think, I think that this type of format that's actually noticed is, I think, more transparent than anything else. I do see the benefits in also having a committee that could provide that early feedback.
So any, I know there's, go ahead.
Yeah, this is similar to a process we've used in the past, and it's been usually a study session format, where a developer would have an idea for a project, and most of the time, it would go to the planning commission. Sometimes it was a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission to hear a proposal, an idea, a concept thrown out, and it was an opportunity for everybody to say, well, have you thought about this? Or how are you going to handle that? And, well, you know, the citizens really want X, Y, Z, and you're proposing something that would stop that, and just have a free flow of ideas. We did that, putting this library together, frankly. We did all kinds of ideas. What would the library look like? Where exactly would it sit? How we were going to pay for it, certainly, but it was an opportunity for us to throw out ideas without getting to concrete decisions. And particularly in the case of when it's a development, we did it with Clayton Station when we were planning that, and I was on the planning commission when we did that. And, you know, they came in with some plain old, plain old strip mall designs, and we said, that's not what Clayton's about. We said, the oak trees have got to stay, you got to figure out a way to do that. We want some articulation. There were different ideas. How many anchors were there going to be? Were there going to be separate pods, or was it all going to be one mass development? There were lots of discussions. And we gave the feedback to the potential developer and the Realtor at the time, who was looking for other developers. And what we got was a couple of choices that came back to us. And by that time, we had a pretty good idea from the community, because the community came to those meetings and gave us feedback as well. So the developer had an idea of what would be acceptable and what really hit a roadblock. And that was helpful. And so I think this could be helpful in the same kind of a way. Sometimes a developer doesn't know if they're running up against a policy that may be very informal, a that's not the Clayton Way kind of a thing, that has never been really articulated, but we all know it when we see it, kind of a thing. And it may save them tons of design time and attorneys and all kinds of other things to get that feedback upfront, before they've spent a ton of dough. And I just think it could have really good prospects. And as the city manager says, it may very well be that they decide Clayton isn't where they want to be. Or they could decide that, you know what, what I had in mind to begin with doesn't really work here like it would somewhere else, but I got an idea for something that could be a whole lot better. So I think it's good for everybody to have that free flow of information that doesn't prejudice anyone coming forward, because after that first meeting, then the developer goes back and puts together whatever they think they heard is wanted, and it may or may not strike the right chord, and nobody's obligated. So I think it has great potential for good things, and, as I said, I would choose not to be on the committee.
So I think the action item in front of us is whether or not to form it, and I think in terms of the participants for the city council, like all other subcommittees that we do, we always, in January, the incoming mayor makes the proposals, and then it gets approved at the council meeting, given that this would be sort of mid-year. I think my proposal as the current mayor would be to have the two members be council member Juan and myself, and I would propose council member Wolf as the alternate. So I think-
Alternate?
That would be my proposal, or at least my vision at this point, but happy to hear what are the comments, and whether or not we want to form. I think the first item is to decide whether or not we want to form it or not. So looking for any motion, any further discussion?
I would move we form the committee.
So let's take that action item first, then. So we have a motion and a second to form the committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I think I'm opposed.
Okay.
Although, I would still serve on it.
Okay, so there's, so that does pass 4 to 1. So then the next, so I think we've now formed the committee. So the next item would be, so I think my proposal as the mayor would be to, like I said, nominate council member Juan and myself to the committee, and council member Wolf as the alternate. Any comments on that?
Well, and then, that being said, what are you talking about with regards to the planning commission?
So I think the city manager's proposal was to have the chair and vice chair, which would then obviously change every year as well.
And then let them figure it out if they can do it.
Right.
I would so move.
I'll second that.
Well, yes.
So that has been moved and seconded, too, so let's take a vote on that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, so that does pass unanimously, unanimously on that.
I think you'll move it.
Okay. So let's move on, finish up. Item nine is council items. Are there any requests for future council meetings from anybody?
I know that you, Councilman Wolf, you had brought up the glyphosate issue previously, and we haven't, it hasn't come-
Yeah.
Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And it hasn't come back yet. I, there's been a lot of movement, and so I think it's important to bring that back when we can. I think just- I think, just, I'd reiterate the importance of that, so.
So another informational item on that?
Is it informational? Let me think.
May I be looking, because we had a...
I hear what you're trying to...
I know. I'd like to take action on it, I guess, to see it on, we think it continues to be prudent for the city to deploy glyphosate, given the current landscape of what's been going on in the state and in the country.
So examination of whether the policies that we agreed to last time, a couple of months ago, are still valid, or whether we should reconsider them?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, we do not have any closed sessions, so we are adjourned to our September 3rd meeting.
Oh, are we going to talk about Labor Day, or we?
Go ahead, before we do that.
That's actually an extra question. I apologize. I meant to suggest to the mayor and the full council that that meeting that would normally fall on September 3rd is one that, at this point, we have no agenda items. It does happen to be the day after Labor Day, so I would suggest that that meeting not be held, and that our next meeting be the 17th of September.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or do we just need an agreement amongst us?
I'll move it.
I think it's not on the agenda to cancel that meeting, but I think the mayor and the city manager can...
I think we had already decided that at the beginning of the summer, when we put our calendar...
No, we tabled it. We said that we'll leave it and address it as needed.
As needed. And so I think the mayor and the city manager can make that decision. Nobody objects to it being canceled? Okay, so then I'll connect with the city manager. Okay. So with that, we are then adjourned to whatever the September...
17th.
17th, yeah.
September...